Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Maryland Department of Planning and Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, Planning Commissioners and Board of Appeals Members Training Course. We are doing a fully virtual training today because we had a few technical issues back when we did the hybrid training at the Maryland Municipal League in June. So I hope a few of you who were not able to join us virtually during that meeting were able to join, are able to join us today. On the screen, you'll see the agenda I sent you earlier today. I am going to give you a, we're just going to briefly go over that before we get started. So it's going to kind of in the welcome and introductions right now. Then I'm going to do the section on the foundations of planning. Then we're going to switch to our Assistant Attorney General Adam Snyder, who's going to do a presentation on law and ethics of planning. Then we're going to take a brief break. I know you're, you're devoting four hours of your time to us today. And that's a lot, and we appreciate that. So we'll give you a brief break. Then we're going to come back from the break and I'm going to overview the comprehensive planning and the planning commissioners' role in comprehensive planning and other things. Then we'll turn over to our Assistant Secretary Chuck Boyd, who will close us out with growth management tools and closing remarks. So I'm going, Chuck, if you could stop sharing this and I'm going to bring up the presentation. And we'll get started. Thank you. Okay. Here we go. Maryland joins nine other states that require training or education for planning commissioners and board of appeals members. This requirement was created in 2009 as part of the smart, green, and growing legislation through Senate Bill 280 and House Bill 297. The intent was to ensure that everyone appointed to these important positions were aware of the rules, responsibilities, laws, and ethics that are common part of the day-to-day work of the boards. All planning commission and board of appeals members who are serving on boards and commissions at the time the law were passed were required to complete an education course that met the intent of the law by July 1st, 2010. And since then, all new members appointed to these boards must complete a course within six months of being appointed. This course meets those, meets those requirements. Want to go over a few logistical stuff here. We will, you will be able to submit questions throughout. Please use the Q and A function or bar at the bottom of your screen. Not the chat. We, I will be asking a few questions throughout that I ask you to put in the chat. But if you have questions for us, it's very important that you put them in the Q and A and not in the chat bar, because the chat bar, just people keep on adding chats and it goes up and up and up and it's lost in the feed. But if you put it in the Q and A, it'll stay and the Q and A will be able to address it. So it's very important. Those who stay for the full time will also get a certificate of completion from the Maryland Department of Planning that you can share with your staff members you work with, your, anybody you need to share locally. So you'll have that documentation. But I do stress, please put your questions in the Q and A and not the chat. So who does this apply to? The requirements for education apply to all planning commissions, planning boards, and board of appeals members and charter and non-charter counties and municipalities. We'll talk a little bit more about that distinction later today. It applies to existing and new members. Once you've received this education, however, there are no requirements to take it again. There are probably a few of you who have already taken the course and are back, back joining us again. We always encourage that as well. Refresh your thoughts. We always add some new information to these slides. But you're not required by statute to take it again. So as, keeping up to date is strongly encouraged, but the law doesn't require you to take it again. So to make this requirement easier, as when it was established, MD prepared an online course that many of you are probably familiar with and many of you might have taken that is available for download or to take at planning.maryland.org. If you're interested in hard copies, there's PDF copies of the training on there that have a lot more background information. If you're interested, you can go on the website and download those PDFs. So let's see here. Also, since today's education course meets the requirements of the law, all of you, I already said that, you'll receive a certificate of completion. And we have your information on the registration form that you filled out to register for this class. So we have all the information we need. First, I want to thank you all for volunteering for your communities and serving on planning commissions, planning boards, and board of appeals members. I know that most, if not all of you, have other jobs, day jobs, and that you devote your evening and sometimes weekend time to support your communities, develop great communities. It's a very important position that often goes underlooked, but overlooked, but not by Maryland Department of Planning. These are today's speakers. You'll hear from Adam and Chuck later. You can already see my face, but Adam is our counsel, Assistant AG, and Chuck Boyd, the Assistant Secretary of Planning Services. So let's get started. We're going to start with the foundations of planning, both in Maryland and nationwide. So what makes Maryland unique? So Maryland has always been a magnet for growth. Its proximity to Washington DC, the nation's capital, its beaches, its mountains, farmland and forests, historic towns, and central location on the eastern seaboard are just some of the features that make Maryland a desirable place to live and have drawn people for centuries. Maryland is small. I think you all probably know that. You see here on the list when it comes to size, we're way down there towards the bottom when it comes to square miles. However, Maryland is the fifth densest state in the US with an average of 623 people per square mile. This doesn't mean that all of Maryland is crowded, nor does, nor does it have to be or should be. Good local planning is vital to ensuring that Maryland can accommodate everyone who wants to live here without impacting our natural resources. Planning is so extensive and has been so extensive in Maryland, because if we want to leave our state in at least as good a condition as we found it, we must consider many things about how we live. If Maryland had the size and population of Montana, planning would probably be less comprehensive. And these numbers are from the census, census population estimates. We're going to talk about a history of good planning throughout this class. We'll come back to this on just some images from Maryland here on the screen. Maryland's planners help determine the efficient land use for homes, stores, jobs, schools, and so to this. And they protect farms, forests, and natural resources. And something I'm going to start first that we're going to do today, but it's going to be many times when I ask you to do this. In the chat, you know, this is a question I'm asking for you. So this is different than questions you have for us, which go into Q and A. I want you to, I'm occasionally be asking you questions that I want you to put in the chat. And this is a way that you all can interact with each other since we're in this virtual environment. So I encourage everybody to read the chats that the people are putting there. As we go out, again, there'll be multiple times to ask you this and we kind of enriches the learning environment if we're all sharing with each other. So I mentioned farms, forest, and natural resources, but planners deal with a lot more resources than that. So please put in the chat what other kinds of resources you can think of that planners are focused on protecting or should be focused on protecting or preserving. And well, you can add those as we go along. All right. We're going to look a little for agricultural preservation for a while. Priority preservation areas, otherwise known as PPAs, are designation for land that contains productive agricultural or forest soils. I'm seeing some of those listed here already in the chat and/or supports profitable agricultural and forestry enterprises. They are governed by local policies that stabilize the agricultural and forest land base. So development does not convert or compromise agricultural or forest resources. The Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, it's got the most awkward acronym ever with MALP, is the state's land preservation entity. It's governed by the Maryland Department of Agriculture, MDA. It was established in 1997, or MALP was established in 1997, and it purchased agricultural preservation easements that forever restrict development on prime farmland and woodland. MDP sits on the Rural Legacy Board. Rural Legacy is another program which provides funding through DNR to preserve large contiguous tracts of land to enhance natural resources, agriculture, forestry, and environmental protection, while supporting sustainable land base for natural resource-based industry. The program creates public-private partnerships and allows those who know the landscape best, such as land trusts, local governments. Hey, Adam, you made it on. Great. To determine the best way to protect the landscapes that are critical to our economy, environment, and quality of life. Few years ago, MDP developed the Land Preservation Dashboard. It is designed to help users assess the status of Maryland's land preservation efforts, access the tabular data that informs the dashboard, and access available land preservation GIS or spatial data. It was created in coordination with DNR and MDP's Geospatial and Data Services Unit. And the dashboard incorporates data from local, state, federal, and nongovernmental preservation programs. Right, still sticking with this history of good planning. Planners also help create, protect historic resources. And I see somebody just put that in there right now. The Sustainable Communities Tax Credit has helped rehabilitate about 4,400 historic buildings and creates, created some 25,000 jobs since 1996. The state's investment of about 350 million has reached into all of Maryland's 23 counties and the city of Baltimore. The Maryland Historical Trust, which is Maryland State Historic Preservation Office, became part of the Maryland Department of Planning in 2005. The trust mission focuses on identification, protection, and enhancement of heritage resources from our shared past. And it complements the department's goal to plan for Maryland's future, because obviously our past is intricately tied with our future. The trust is responsible for undertaking the survey and documentation of both architectural and archaeological resources. The survey work is done in partnership with local governments and nonprofit organizations. Survey documentations, these include written reports, photographs, maps, are included in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties, which is made available to the public through the internet and at the MHT's offices in Crownsville. The trust administers several programs aimed at protecting historic properties. MHT's Review and Compliance Program administers review of state and federal undertakings to ensure that Maryland's important historic and archaeological properties will not be adversely affected or destroyed by the actions of federal or state agencies or by entities receiving assistance from those agencies. This regulatory program fulfills federal and state responsibilities under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 and the Maryland Historical Trust Act of 1985. Many of you probably heard of Section 106 or Section 106 reviews in the past. The Historic Preservation Easement Program is the highest form of protection available for any historic, archaeological, or cultural resource. MHT receives donations of gift easements and often receives easements as a condition of state and federal grant awards. MHT holds easements on 2022 historic properties in Justin District 45 alone. And this includes Clifton Mansion, which you see on the screen here. They hold many more easements across the state, but that's just to give you a scale in this one area. MHT assists local governments in their efforts to assist historic properties through historic area zoning ordinances. And MHT often works with CHAP in Baltimore City, for example. MHT is required to update its state historic preservation plan every five years. Completed in 2024, the one you, the cover, the one on this, you see on the screen, Heritage 2031 is the newest update. And its vision is to protect and share Maryland's diverse cultural heritage, fostering a sense of pride, awareness, belonging, and stewardship among our, among our communities, while promoting economic vitality, equity, and accessibility, sustainability, educational enrichment, and climate resilience. All right. I have another thing for you to add to the chat. So my question for you. What are some things that planners need to do to ensure a future of good planning? Interested in your thoughts on that. So we talked about the kind of resources that they should be concerned about preserving. So take the time to add some ones in here about what they need to do. These are more actions. I see some good ones already being added in there. All right. Okay. So on the screen here, you will see a lovely setting, definitely what we would call a place. And this is in Maryland. So we'll go through some potential options. Well, actually, I should, I think I gave it away. Sorry, I forgot about, sorry, Chuck, I know you made this and I gave it away. So is it London? I think I already gave it away. It's not London, but it could be. Is it Copenhagen? They have a lot of settings like this. It's at Venice also. But the answer is D Frederick, Maryland. I hope many of you have been there. It's a wonderful place and it's brought a lot of mutual benefits to Frederick City from resiliency to placemaking. And it's definitely a place if you haven't been to, I recommend you visit. Yep, Frederick. Okay. Let's work a little bit about the history of planning now. In 1916, New York City adopted the first comprehensive zoning regulations to apply citywide, which became the model for zoning in the rest of the country. That, those zoning regulations regulated height, height, building height, building bulk, and use. The Standard Zoning Enabling Act of 1922, or there, then there was the Standard Zoning Enabling Act of 1922. It was a model law drafted by the US Department of Commerce that states could use to delegate zoning authority to jurisdictions. And I always like to point out that the Secretary of Commerce in 1922 was Herbert Hoover, right? Hoover, later president. But he did have a start with the Secretary of Commerce. Daniel Burnham, you see on the screen, the guy with the really cool mustache. He took a leading role in the creation of master plans for the development of several cities, including Chicago and Washington DC, famously telling planners to make no small plans. And this is in the Columbia Exhibition of 1893 and White City. Edmund Bacon, the guy on the left you see on the screen, also very famous. He advanced redevelopment in Philadelphia in his long stint as planning director there. The plans for big industrial cities at the turn of the 20th century recommended extensive development and redevelopment and huge infrastructure projects to accommodate their booming populations. And this resulted in many iconic achievements and returns on investment. This but communities change and with them, planning needs to change. So the next thing I'm going to ask you is what might change in a community that would require a change in planning focus? So what might change? What could be some conditions that changed in a community that would require planners to respond to them or alter their focus? So give that a thought and please share that in the chat. All right. The, the Chicago Plan Commission was created in 1909 to implement the plan of Chicago, often called the Burnham Plan. The commission was successful at fostering relationships with politicians of several types and encouraging voters to support its initiatives. Reflecting the importance that residents placed on good planning between 1912 and 1931, Chicagoans approved 86 plan-related bond issues covering some 17 different projects. And Chicago is very famous in the history of planning and it's something that professional planners and citizen planners, if they ever dig into the history, we'll, we'll learn a lot about Chicago. Okay. But the history of planning is not one of unchecked progress. Following World War II, planners and civic leaders in cities throughout the country initiated a concept known as urban renewal, which aimed to clear and redevelop slums in the name of civic and economic progress, often with the support of federal funding. Working class and predominantly minority residents lived in these areas and which in many cases were vibrant and culturally rich communities that were simply getting the way of progress as the professionals and power brokers defined it. Little concern was given to the opinions of existing residents as freeways and large economic development projects destroyed existing communities and displaced millions against their will. This was Burnham's make no small plans taken to a frightening extreme. One person who pushed back is Jane Jacobs, who you see on the screen right now. Author of The Death and Life of Great American Cities, which is required reading for all planners. I definitely ran it, read it when I was, I definitely read it when I was in school. She rose to prominence when Robert Moses, a powerful New York City official, attempted to extend Fifth Avenue directly through Washington Square Park. She organized stiff community-based resistance and Moses eventually scrapped his plans. In Death and Life, Jacobs contended that cities were complex systems, that they should be filled with people, and that density was good. That people and activity on streets provided not only a liveliness and vitality to a city, but also provided safety and security through eyes on the street or natural surveillance. Bottom line, she argued, planning ought to be about people, not buildings, and these remain core principles of modern planning. But why do, so we'll keep coming back to this question of why do we plan? First and foremost, it is so that we can guide sustainable and efficient use of our land. It also helps us figure out how much public infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, schools, we need to support our population. Planning helps us to protect sensitive resource areas like wetlands and forests. And planning is highly interdisciplinary and has as many different areas of focus as any other profession does. When I tell people I'm a planner, they always ask me to fix their roads. But in my current job, I have nothing to do with that. But you know, the work of planners definitely is connected ultimately to that kind of work. But most of all, planning takes foresight and a long-term planning horizon. You really need to look a long way in the future, because a lot of these plans, even smaller ones, take a long time to be implemented. What is the role of planning? Understand the physical, I want to understand the physical landscape and a diverse and dynamic population. Gauge the appropriateness of developments and the capacity to fit them into a whole greater than the sum of its parts. And to combine and synthesize different ideas to provide a vision that appeals to residents. A concept that repeatedly, repeatedly arises in the planning profession, both for citizen and professional planners, is the concept of public interest. And while the, the concept of public interest might seem straightforward when you just think about it for a couple of seconds, it gets more and more complicated the more you think about it. So this is my next question to you to put in here. What does the concept of public interest mean to you? Please put that in the chat and share your thoughts with your, your fellow attendees. And if you're having trouble seeing, I saw somebody said they couldn't see the chat. You're going to have to open up the chat at the bottom with the two little speaking bubbles. That should show you the chat on the side. All right. So the role of planning, and we already talked about urban renewal, but there are even, there are other dark periods as well, has not always been a positive force in America. Going back even farther than urban renewal and with the support of New Deal policies, planning and planners also contributed to racial segregation and social injustice. In the 30s, the Federal Homeowners Loan Corporation created residential security or red line maps of major American cities. Right here, you can see Baltimore's on the screen, which was one of the first in the country. Those areas shown in red are predominant, were predominantly African-American neighborhoods, and they were labeled hazardous and therefore mortgage lenders and appraisers denied services, loans, and capital investment within the red line. The New Deal's Federal Housing Administration, or FHA, denied minority households access to the federally backed guaranteed mortgage loans created through the National Housing Act of 1934. A comparison of this 1937 map to a map of poor economic and health indicators in Baltimore today reveals a striking overlap. Essentially, the refusal of the federal government to provide the same housing finance benefits to families of color with the support of local leaders significantly contributed to today's wealth gap. But there are also examples of local planning for inequity riddled throughout our history. Restrictive covenants preventing black families from purchasing homes within certain neighborhoods strengthened de facto residential segregation, even when legal discrimination was being dismantled. An exclusionary zoning, which limits the supply of and access to affordable housing through minimum lot size and single residence per lot requirements, minimum square footage requirements, and other zoning restrictions. They drive up the price of housing, and that has similarly exacerbated residential segregation and concentrated poverty. Finally, budgets demonstrate priorities. And far too often, American jurisdictions have prioritized capital investment, such as that for infrastructure, recreational uses, and community facilities, and wealthier neighbors at the expense of the rest. The first step towards planning for equity is acknowledging the sometimes ugly history of planning. Even if current staff and officials did not contribute to this history, they serve in positions that represent the history and sometimes need to go out of their way to overcome a legacy of distrust that is often well-earned. Planners planning for equity need to be as deliberate in their approach as those who are planning for inequity in years past. This may lead to discomfort, but this is a vital part of the process in listening over explaining. Planning for equity requires that everyone, particularly those historically and currently underserved, participate authentically in the planning process. Baltimore City and Howard County and some other ones recently, Prince George's County is quite a few of them now, have implemented planning academies to build community education and leadership around planning and zoning issues using a localized approach. Planning organizations need to look internally as well when planning for equity. Do we look like and represent the stakeholders we are supposed to serve? Do we embody equity within our own organization? Equity lenses are another tool used in planning decision-making processes, including resource allocation that can lead to more racially and economically equitable policies and programs. We traditionally develop, analyze development proposals through the lens of their impacts on transportation, infrastructure, and public facilities such as schools. But why not equity? Capital investment can be consciously directed to underserved communities. All right, we're going to stop here now for Q and A. I know I gave you a lot of information there. No questions in the Q and A tab at the bottom, but if you'd like to, if you have any for us, please go ahead and put them in there. Give it a couple more seconds. We're going to have a lot more opportunities, so you should be able to, feel free to put the Q and A in the Q and A tool whenever you have one. We'll get to it. It doesn't have to be only when we stop. It doesn't have to be only when we stop for Q and A. So what was the question I had? So the last question I asked of you all to put in the chat was, what does the concept of public interest meet, means to you? What does the concept of public interest mean to you? And then the next question is, will you speak on the role of town codes and how that may hinder or restrict the ability of planning commissions? Yes, we will. We'll talk a lot about codes and, and the legal limitations and requirements. That's probably the bulk of this session, actually. We'll be definitely getting to that, but thank you for your question. Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to continue here. We're going to look a little bit more, even more at Maryland right now. Okay. The state, oh, here, it's corrected content, contentedness and connectedness to one's community and what is conveniently around them. That's my goal for Berlin. It's a great goal and thank you. I hope you continue to share that with your, your colleagues and your community. I think that's what a lot of us want for our communities. So the state of Maryland has the, officially, the state of Maryland has the authority for planning and zoning, right? However, it delegates this authority to counties and municipalities that have planning and zoning authority. It does this through enabling legislation that we're going, you're going to hear a lot about today. But the basics are here. It enables charter counties to enact local planning and zoning laws, and it enables non-charter counties, as well as Montgomery and Prince George's Counties in specific areas such as required and optional elements for comprehensive plans, and we'll look at those as well. The formal Article 20, former Article 28 in statute created the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for Montgomery and Prince George's Counties to implement planning, zoning, and subdivision. Other planning-related state legislation includes things like water and sewer planning, smart growth policies, stormwater management, forest conservation, non-title wetlands, title wetlands, endangered species, flood plan management, and a lot of others. Okay. The, a new land use article was enacted into law during the 2012 General Assembly Session. What you might have seen previously as 66 is now the land use article, or 66B is now the land use article. It has a lot of specific provisions and one size doesn't fit all. And actually, so the new, the land use article combines the provisions of 66B and Article 28. And then there are two main divisions in the land use article. Division one contains statewide enabling authority and planning requirements and other provisions concerning land use in commissioned counties, municipal corporations, and Baltimore City. Division two contains provisions on the MNC PPC, which I previously mentioned, Maryland National Capitol Planning, Parks and Planning Commission, and on land use in Montgomery and Prince George's Counties specifically. In 2013, the Maryland General Assembly repealed Articles 23A, 24, 25, 25A, and 25B and replaced them with the local government article. You'll find the provisions, at least I frequently work with in the local government article, would be those related to municipal annexations. I know it mentioned charter counties and non-charter counties a few times. Here's a map showing them to you. The green counties are charter or code counties. They have a diff, they have different They have a diff, they have different comp plan requirements and different, just different requirements, they're based more on their, they're based on their charter or code that they create. And they have a council form of government. Their comp plan requirements are different than those from municipalities and non-charter counties. The blue county, the blue counties are the non-charter counties. So you see, most of them are charter, and they have a commissioner form of government. Planning is not a new concept, that's definitely something to keep in mind. Early colonists were careful to plan to allow their communities to grow, such as the plan for Philadelphia and Oglethorpe's Ward and Grid Plan for Savannah. Plans also resulted in some great places such as Central Park, which is pictured here. Law and legislation have and will continue to play a huge part in planning. And Euclid versus Ambler Realty from 1926, you're going to hear a lot more about that from Adam, was a Supreme Court case that is probably the most important because it clearly stated that counties and municipalities have the right to do planning and zoning. They are an acceptable use of the government's police powers, and you'll learn more about that as well. All right. There's a few here listed on the screen that I will go over some more. The Regional Plan Association, or RPA, grew out of an effort of business, businesses, professional and civic leaders to plan for the New York City metropolitan area instead of just New York City alone. The Housing Act of 1937, formerly the United States Housing, well, Housing Act of 1937, sometimes called the Wagner-Stiegel Act, provided for subsidies to be paid from the US government to local public housing agencies to improve living conditions for low-income families. The National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, you might have heard about NEPA reviews, requires federal agencies to consider the environmental impacts of their proposed actions and reasonable alternatives to those actions. NEPA created the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS. EPA reviews and comments on EIS's prepared by other federal agencies and ensures that its own actions comply with NEPA. Those are the US planning laws, let's look at some Maryland ones now. Maryland has been and continues to be considered a leader in planning in comparison to other states. During the Great Depression, the Maryland General Assembly created the first state planning commission in the country to coordinate public works programs and funding that were coming out of the New Deal. The State Planning Office, which is now us, the Planning Department, was founded in 1959, and a state land use act was enacted in 1974. The Economic Growth Resource Protection and Planning Act was enacted in 1992 and established the state's growth policies and the visions that are included in local plans. Now, those visions have converted to the policies, or in principles, which we'll talk about later. But back then is when they first created the planning visions. In 1997, the Smart Growth Areas Act established the concept of priority funding areas. And in 2010, the Sustainable Communities Act was passed, which combined several state-funded revitalization and redevelopment programs into one umbrella program. Right? Looking more at priority funding areas. So priority funding areas, or PFAs in short, are designated areas in Maryland where both the local and state government agree that growth would be best situated and most productive. A PFA designation directs state infrastructure, growth-related infrastructure spending into those areas, and the law restricts public, state public expenditure in areas outside of them. This helps preserve farmland, open space, natural resources, and it helps strengthen those areas that are PFAs, often which are existing neighborhoods, and places that can sustainably support more development. PFA, PFA designations are identified by the local government. There's a lot of misconceptions out there that think that the state designates PFAs, but they're actually designated by the local government and then reviewed by the state. So it's a good example of local and state government working together to advance good planning that preserves resources and strengthens our existing communities in Maryland. The boundaries of incorporated municipalities as they existed in 1997 were automatically designated as PFAs, but as jurisdiction, municipalities annex, that's not as, it's not as automatic. MDP, we've reviewed them for PFA certification upon annexation. So here's the requirements or what you would consider the criteria or what you would expect to see in most PFAs. It needs to have existing or planned water and sewer service. All right, so the, by a jurisdiction is showing by its planned water and sewer infrastructure that it wants to grow in this area, because when you direct the water and sewer infrastructure, growth tends to follow. If it's zoned for residential, it needs to have an average residential density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre, right? It can go much higher than that, but it needs, that's the minimum showing that if it's residentially zoned, you need to have a certain level of density there. It needs to have a growth plan consistent with predictions in the state and the size of the PFA based on land needed for 20 years. It also needs to be in a locally designated growth area, and you designate those growth areas in the comprehensive plan, either a county or municipality. All right, here, this analysis shows residential parcels that are depicted in range, this is between 1998 and 2018, being created in growth areas. So, and the parcels created outside PFAs in green. So you see here that parcels created inside PFAs between those years, 71, close to 72% of parcels created in that 20-year period were inside PFAs compared to outside PFAs. Comment areas is another, it's a, PFA common areas are a whole different thing. We're probably not going to get into here today, but it's a very small percentage of the parcels created. But then if you look here, it flips almost completely when you're looking at acres. And this makes sense, right? Because if you're looking at 3.5 dwelling units per acre, those are going to be smaller parcels, smaller lots. So you can fit a lot more of them in there. So these, these parcels, you know, while there's so many fewer of them created outside of PFAs, they're much larger parcels. So when it comes to actual acres, there's many more of them. So that's why it might seem counterintuitive at first, but it's actually not when you think of the purpose of PFAs and the kind of parcels and areas that are designated as PFAs. What are the trends? Maryland expects to see about 600,000 new jobs by 2040. And if the land use trends, if the land use trends continue as they are, many of these jobs would be located outside of established order communities, which have, can have a detrimental effect on existing commercial centers. Part of the reason MDP communities need strong local planning that you all can provide is that maintaining past trends and growth patterns for the state will have cost implications as well as an effect on our quality of life. Take past land development patterns, for example. Over the past 30 years, 650,000 acres of land have been developed. To put that into context, it took 300 years to develop the first 650,000 acres in this state. From 20, or 2009 to 2018, data shows that we have used only about 50,000 acres for residential development. Most of the residential development, about 75% is inside PFAs, and MDP does track this. Compared to the 10 years prior, from 1999 to 2008, where about 157,000 acres were used for residential development and where 70% of the development occurred in PFAs. So we're on the right trajectory, right trends, but we still, we still have ways to go, and we hope that you can work with us on that. All right, we're going to do a bit of a review here. Oftentimes, we have an audience, a physical audience for this training, so people can call out answers. So here's another one where I'd like you to put your answers in the, in the chat. And it'll be true or false or multiple choice. So true or false, Maryland is the fifth most densely populated state. All right, see lots of trues? And it's true. All right, by 2040, Maryland is expected to grow by? Okay, see some Cs and Ds here. I think the only one I mentioned, yeah, it was the, I need to check the new residence ones. I'm not sure about that one, but it's 600,000 new jobs, so that is C. All right, why do we plan? Yes, E. And most of these questions, I know the last one wasn't the case. You'll say most of these questions, they have all of the above, might be the answer. Where do Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority? The governor, the United Nations, the land use article, or the Maryland Department of Planning? Okay, I've seen some Cs and Ds there, mostly Cs, and the answer is C. It's the land use article, remember, the state of Maryland actually has planning and zoning authority, but they delegate it to local governments with planning authority through the land use article. Priority funding areas are, are priority funding areas are, make most efficient use of taxpayer dollars, are located outside of growth areas, are drawn by the state, or only include municipalities. All right, seen lots of As, and that's correct. That's the idea, efficient use of taxpayer dollars, they're actually inside growth areas. They're not drawn by the state, they're locally designated, and they don't only include municipalities. It's true that as of municipal boundaries as of 1997, all those are PF, PFAs, but there's also plenty of PFAs that are in counties. All right, I'm gonna stop for Q and A before I'm going to turn this over to Adam. Let's see here. What impact on development and planning is anticipated due to the rise in remote work? I would say that this is something that's been discussed for a long time. Well, at least the past five years since the, since, since the pandemic. I know, I don't know if I can give you what, I don't think I can say exactly where people are live or, like draw you a map of this. But I know that many, I've heard it just, I guess anecdotally from, from more rural Maryland jurisdictions that they're been trying to recruit and encourage people to, that can remote live, can work fully remotely to, to move to their communities. But this is, a lot of this has been, and I was just at a conference in Western Maryland, and I know that's a big push for not just Western Maryland, but a lot of Appalachian communities because the quality of life, the connection with nature. This is, can be hindered by broadband access, but that is also something that many of them are actively working on in this, in our, the state. But I have also, you know, at least in our department, you know, we still, we're back in a hybrid. We do still have a few telework days a week, but it's not like where it was. And I think a lot of companies are going back to at least a hybrid work environment where you have to come in some. Chuck, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, just real quick on, just to follow up on that. I think it's an important thing that, that local planning departments, the county and the state need to continue to monitor the impact of remote work. We have recently noticed, and we, we take the responsibility to, our department, to project future enrollment at the schools, at the pupil level for each of the, the school, school levels. And we are seeing that as a result of COVID and homeschooling really went up significantly. And so it has impacted enrollments at the local level in terms of capacity, creating more capacity in some overcrowded situations. So we have seen it, it shift transportation patterns to some degree as well. But it's something, it's an ongoing effort to, because there is some gradual, gradual moving back to work more days a week, but it will never go back to pre-COVID levels in terms of the transportation impact. So it's an important thing for us to all continue to monitor and to try to adapt to one of those influences that, that all planners need to be mindful of.
Thank you, Chuck. There's a couple of questions in here about the job growth number, an estimate of 600,000. I'm not 100% sure where we got that one. I know we updated this somewhat recently to include that number. I imagine it's from the Maryland Department of Labor.
Yeah, it, well, that, that number also comes from the Bureau of Economic Analysis for the state as a whole. And we have checked it with our state data analysis center, and it's, it still holds loosely the same amount, although again, there are stressors that are occurring in our economy, as you can imagine, from shifts to the federal government employment. So it's another thing that I think that we're gonna, and, and you know, we'll admit that this presentation has some older stats. So we need to revisit some of those numbers that are current to get them as responsive to today's economy.
Yeah, a lot of comments about AI in there and the Q and A. So that's, that'd be good to talk with the Department of Labor on how they anticipate AI impacting job numbers in Maryland. I'll take the question about, was there recent legislation to address unintentional redlining? I don't know about unintended, unintentional redlining, I'm not, but there was recently, the Just Communities Act was passed a couple of years ago, maybe two years ago, two sessions ago. Where, so Just Communities is, it's run, run by DHCD. And they, there's an analysis of underserved communities through a variety of different indicators. It could, they could have been formerly redlined communities, they could have been underserved for other reasons. I mean, redlining wasn't everywhere throughout the state, and I encourage you to check out the Just Communities Program, they have a map available now. And the idea is these underserved communities, again, that were determined through economic health and other indicators, that the state through various programs, many through DHCD, will be focusing that capital investment, focusing, focusing other services and resources and funding to those areas to ideally increase the justice and reverse that, that legacy that has led them to these negative, negative indicators. It's, it will take a long time. And, you know, there's still a lot of coordination across state agencies on how different, how different agencies are going to address, modify their programs within, or to give higher priorities to just communities. But yes, there was legislation passed, I think it was the Just Communities Act, I think it was 2024. They have a great staff working on it, and that goes back to what I was mentioning earlier about, you know, there was, you know, planning for inequity, there was intentional planning of that in the past to lead to inequitable outcomes, and now really the only way to counteract that is to have intentional planning to try to counteract or remedy some of those practices of the past. And Just Communities Act is just one way to do that. It's, it's not going to solve everything, but it is one, one tool. All right, I think we're on to a little over. I saw that Adam was able to get on, I'm glad, Adam, that worked for you. I'm going to stop sharing, and you can share your screen.
Yes, it, it worked for me in that I've been able to join, but I spent 40 minutes this morning learning how to share seamlessly. So I mastered that process, but I mastered it on Google Meets. So I've not actually tried it on Zoom, I'm going to give it a whirl here, but I might ask you to step back in and do it.
If I need to, I will.
All right. So you're, you have to stop sharing.
I stopped sharing, so you just go to the bottom with share.
It says.
Yeah, you're gonna hit.
Here we go, okay.
And then you pick the screen that has your presentation on it, yep. There you go, looks great.
All right. And I've got to move it over into the right screen, so I'm kind of looking.
We see it, we see it perfectly, Adam. If you, as long as you can see it somewhere.
Yeah, do you, do you see me though?
We do, I see you at the top, and below you, I see your slides.
Yeah, but I can't move it on to the screen where you all are. The camera's in the wrong spot. So hold on a sec.
Yeah, it's, it's on, yeah. No, we don't see the slides now, yeah. I have to do that too, like I have my presentation on one screen, and then I have to look forward at the camera. You just kind of have to look.
Okay, well, we'll just do it that way. Okay, so you all seeing the right thing now?
No, I'm still not, it said you were sharing, but I do not see it.
It's, it's up now.
Oh, you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, but you don't, Joe.
I don't, that's okay.
How about the audience members, are they seeing it?
Yes, yes.
All right, don't worry about me, Adam, I've seen it before, keep on going.
All right, I just want to make sure it's working. Okay, so we're going to be talking about the. All right, I just wanna make sure it's working. Okay, so we're gonna be talking about, um, the, um, sorry, folks, where's the, can't seem to turn the page here. There we go. Okay, we're talking, uh, I'm gonna be talking about kind of a lot of the legal principles that underlie, uh, Maryland planning and zoning, and some of the constitutional things that you need, constitutional principles that you need to be aware of when you go about doing the work that you do. Um, so we're gonna cover a lot of ground here. Uh, again, legal authority for planning and zoning, constitutional limitations. We'll be talking about takings and exactions and equal protection. And then shifting course a little bit to talk more about planning and zoning law in Maryland. Things like the comprehensive zoning, uh, planning and zoning process, property-specific zoning, vesting rules, then some rules applicable to boards of appeal. And then I'm gonna finish up talking about, uh, government ethics. All right, so you've already heard Joe mention, um, Euclid versus Ambler Realty, a case from nineteen twenty-six that is in a, uh, kind of the seminal planning and zoning case in the United States. And you may also know, have heard the term Euclidean zoning, uh, that comes from this case. And it broadly describes the practice of identifying large portions of a jurisdiction that will be, you know, uh, dedicated to industrial uses, others dedicated to commercial uses, others dedicated to residential uses. Um, the, the case itself involved, uh, the tiny village of Euclid, Ohio, which passed an ordinance dividing the village into several districts, again, industrial, commercial, residential. Now, the Ambler Realty Company owned sixty-eight acres of land in the village, spanning across multiple districts. And it was restricted by this, by the, the zoning that was enacted in the types of buildings it could construct on its own land. So Ambler sued, claiming that the ordinance violated his or its constitutionally protected liberty and property rights. Now, a lower federal court agreed with, uh, the Ambler Realty Company, but the Supreme Court reversed. As Joe indicated, the court upheld the zoning ordinance, concluding that it was a reasonable exercise of the, uh, the town's police power, the, the power to decide for itself how best to grow and maximize the welfare and safety of its residents. Now, that's all well and good, and we wouldn't have planning and zoning, uh, we wouldn't have this course if the Supreme Court had come out the other way. But the court was careful to note that it was only addressing the constitutionality of the village's zoning authority. It was not addressing whether the exercise of that authority, um, how it might affect the value or marketability of individual properties. So when it comes to land use decisions that affect individual properties, the constitutional analysis becomes more complicated as it, uh, because it implicates the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment provides in relevant part, nor, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. Now, those, those are just twelve words. Seven of them highlighted, highlighted in blue here have generated thousands of court decisions defining the line between regulating in the public interest and confiscating private property. Now, we're not going to be talking about what constitutes private property, or what constitutes public use, or just compensation. All three are heavily litigated issues, but they don't really bear on what you do as on a day-to-day basis. Instead, we're going to focus on what constitutes a taking, because it's the one aspect of this that you need to keep in mind as you carry out your role. So, there are three forms of takings, eminent domain, regulatory takings, and certain types of land use exactions, and we're gonna take those in turn. Eminent domain, you're probably pretty familiar with. It's when the government comes knocking and says that it wants your property for a road, a park, or some other public project. Uh, as a planning commissioner, you're probably not going to have to deal with that very much. That's typically the domain of, of agencies like a Department of Public Works or other agencies that handle large public works projects. And when they exercise eminent domain, there's no question that compensation is required. The, the, the meatier, more difficult questions arise when the government doesn't directly take property, but instead regulates it in a way that lessens its development potential. That's where the constitutional action really is. And that's where the concept of regulatory takings comes in. As the name suggests, a regulatory taking occurs when government, though it does not exercise eminent domain, regulates property to such a degree that it has effectively taken the property altogether. But how do you determine when, how do you determine what constitutes a taking when all government regulation affects the value of property? Uh, whenever EPA enacts more stringent air quality rules, it affects the value of coal. And in the Euclid case, the simple act of zoning the town's jurisdiction does affect property values. So property that used to be developable as a, an industrial, uh, use can no longer be, uh, developed in that way because it's been zoned, uh, residential. So the trick is to distinguish between those regulations that cause kind of a normal, um, variation in property value and use, and those regulations that, in the words of the Supreme Court, go too far. So after uttering that very, you know, uh, opaque phrase, whether regulation goes too far, the Supreme Court embarked on about, you know, seventy years of trying to define what it means to go too far. The first case that they articulated a test for determining whether a regulatory takings occur, uh, occurs is in the Penn Central v. New York case from nineteen seventy-eight. It involved the New York City Historic Preservation Agency's rejection of a proposal to build a skyscraper on top of Grand Central Station in Manhattan. That, of course, affected the value of the property. The Supreme Court, though, uh, applied an ad hoc multi-factor test to conclude that there wasn't a, a taking here. Now, the court that looked at three factors, uh, when it, you know, undertook its analysis. First, the economic effect of the governmental action, the reasonable investment-backed expectations involved, or the, and the character of the, the governor, government action. Now, what those mean is, uh, the economic effect, how, how badly does the regulation affect the value of the property? Does it render it almost valueless, or is it reduce its value by five percent? Uh, reasonable investment-backed expectations are designed to get at what did the, under what expectations did the landowner have when he acquired the property? Did the landowner acquire the property knowing that it would be subject to these regulations, and he probably wouldn't be able to develop in the way that he was now being told that he couldn't develop? Or did he buy the property before the regulations came about, and so had an expectation that he'd be able to develop it fully, and now is being frustrated in that? And the character of the government action, is it more like just garden variety regulation? Or does this look like a circumstance where the government, through the mechanism of a regulation, is trying to compel someone to leave their land idle, so that it's essentially a park or something like that? Now, the test, whenever you're talking about ad hoc multi-factor tests, they're very, very fact-specific. As a result, there's no bright line test here. It's very difficult to determine in advance what is and is not a taking under the Penn Central test. That led the court to start identifying certain categories of governmental actions that automatically constitute takings, so that you don't have to go through an ad hoc fact-based analysis. You can just say, that's a taking, open and shut case. These are called the categorical horse, or, uh, per se taking doctrines. Right, the first one I'm gonna talk about is the physical takings. The Supreme Court announced the concept of physical takings in the Loretto Teleprompter versus Teleprompter case, which involved a New York City ordinance that required the owners of apartment buildings to allow a cable, cable companies to install cables and cable boxes along the sides and roof, roots of apartment buildings to create a cable highway that would provide cable service to New York City residents. The effect of the ordinance was very small, but effectively permanent. It was like a three-foot by three-foot metal box that had to be screwed into the side of a building with wires coming out of it. Um, the court concluded that that was a taking. It had almost no impact on the value of the apartment buildings. But the court ruled that, uh, it doesn't matter whether an action achieves some sort of important public benefit, or how much of an impact it has on the, on private property rights. It is an automatic taking if you are allowing someone else to occupy the owner's property. Now, the second one, and the one you need to be more aware of is, uh, what's called a Lucas-style total taking. Uh, and this, as almost all of these doctrines, uh, are, that is derived from a Supreme Court case by the name Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal Commission. Now, under the South Carolina's Beachfront Management Act, the construction of houses was prohibited seaward of a, a, a literal line in the sand. The purpose of that line in the sand was to preserve the sand dunes and protect the coastal houses that were behind it. So the, if, the act effectively prohibited all development seaward of that land. Mr. Lucas owned two lots that were seaward of that land. And in between those two land lots was a house that had already been constructed before the, um, that regulatory line was drawn. Um, so the Supreme Court ruled that that constituted a taking because the regulation denied Mr. Lucas of all economically viable use of his land. Before the regulation, he could build a house, witness the house that was sitting right next door. After the regulation, all he could do was sit on his, sunbathe on his property, or maybe put up a tent and, um, camp out there. But the court said that that kind of use doesn't count. He's been deprived of all economically viable use, and when that happens, it's a taking no matter what. Now, all takings, all plaintiffs in takings cases try to get into this box. Again, it's a per se automatic taking. If you get into that box, you win. But also because the Penn Central test is so difficult for landowners to win because it's, there's just, there's no silver bullet. It's a highly fact-based and an amenable, malleable test. So, landowners try to come up with creative ways to get into the Lucas, uh, box. But the court has made clear that it's pretty difficult to do. That's because a per se taking occurs under this doctrine only when a regulation denies a landowner of all economically viable use. Remember Mr. Lucas's circumstance, where all he could do is sunbathe and camp. It's not a circumstance where you're, you have to build, you can't build the same size house you wanted. You have to build something smaller. That's not going to qualify. Also, the Supreme Court in Lucas said that a reduction in value of the property is almost never going to constitute a Lucas-style taking. In order to fit into the box, when you're just, um, uh, based purely on a diminution of value, you're gonna have to show, or a plaintiff is gonna have to show a ninety-five percent reduction in value, or something along those lines. There have been courts, court decisions applying Lucas that have said that seventy-eight, seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent are not enough. So the difficulty of getting into the Lucas box leads to some, um, creative, um, structuring of, of the, the constitutional claims that are brought. So it's best illustrated by this example. Let, let, let's say you own a one hundred, one hundred acre parcel of land, and a one-twenty acre corner of it is wetlands. You are, apply for a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to develop those wetlands, and you're denied. So you bring a lawsuit saying, I am being deprived of all economically viable use of that twenty eight, you, all, all, economically viable use of that twenty acres of wetlands. Is that a taking? No, that won't work, uh, because the Supreme Court has said that when you're looking at takings case, uh, claims, you have to look at the parcel as a whole. So in the example I gave, where you own a hundred acre piece of property, and only a twenty acre piece, you know, corner is wetlands, if you're denied a permit for that twenty acres of wetlands, you can still develop the other acre, eighty acres, and you're still gonna get economically viable use of that parcel of the land. So, um, there will be plaintiffs, because they wanna get into this Lucas box, uh, will, uh, come up with creative ways to, uh, try to do so, and the Supreme Court has, uh, erected some obstacles, uh, here and there. And this parcel as a whole analysis applies to all different types of, of ways of kind of segmenting the property interest, whether it's, um, you know, geographical as, as I suggest, as I described in my example, but also, uh, you know, time restrictions that moratoriums basically say you can't develop for five years, but at the end of that five years, you're gonna be, be able to develop. So basically, moratoria, uh, do not constitute a, uh, Lucas-style taking for that reason. All right, let's, um, switch gears just a little bit. We're still within the takings context, but now we're gonna talk about, uh, exactions. Um, but there are another way that plaintiffs can, uh, seek and obtain compensation for restrictions on the use of their land. So, and it, an exaction is an affirmative condition placed on the receipt of a permit, special exception, or other govern, property-related governmental approval. And under certain conditions, an exaction may amount to a taking. Now, to be constitutional, for such a, a condition, an exaction to be constitutional, there has to be an essential nexus between the condition, um, and, uh, the, uh, between the condition and the permitted activity, and the burden imposed by the condition must be roughly proportional to the harm caused by the permitted activity. And as with categorical, uh, takings, uh, so far, uh, two iconic Supreme Court cases lend their names to these types of takings. The first is Nolan versus California Coastal Commission. Now, the Nolans applied for a permit to enlarge their beachfront house. The Coastal Commission, citing concerns that a larger house would obscure the public's view from, uh, public's view of the beach from the public street that runs in front of the house, required the Nolans to grant an easement behind their house and across their privately-owned beach. Now, what's wrong with that? How does access along the beach address the public's loss of a view from the public street in front of the house? Well, the court had a problem with that, and concluded that there was no connection between the two. That they, the California Coastal Commission could have required the landowner to, um, dedicate an easement to allow people to walk along, you know, into their property to get to a point where they could stand and observe the beach. That would be related to their stated concern about the enlargement of the house. But requiring the landowner to give an easement, uh, across their privately-held beach behind the house has nothing to do with the view shed concerns, and therefore the court struck it down and articulated the, the, the Nolan aspect of the exactions test. There must be an essential nexus between the exaction required to develop the property and the legitimate governmental purpose. and the legitimate governmental purpose asserted as the basis for the exaction. Now, let's go on to the next case in this area. Another Supreme Court case called Dolan versus City of Tigar. Now, in Dolan, the owner of a hardware store applied for a permit to expand their store, which was located in a flood zone. And they got the permit, but it was conditioned upon the owner deeding to the city the portion of the site located within the 100-year flood plain for a greenway to alleviate the project's flood impacts. The court held that the city could require a greenway to alleviate flooding, could require the hardware store to leave that portion of their property vacant so as to carry floodwaters in the event of a flood, but that requiring that the land be actually dedicated to the city, handed over to the city exceeded the city's legitimate flood control goals. Now, Nolan and Dolan together require that a condition is related both in nature and in extent to the impact of a proposed development. And the test they establish is designed to distinguish between requiring, you know, between instances where the government is requiring the landowner to internalize the cost of their development, which is allowed, and those instances where the government is using the permit as an opportunity to effectively extort conditions that are not justified by the project's impact. That's not allowed. So that's the distinction the court's trying to draw through their exactions jurisprudence, which goes, you'll hear it always referred to as the Nolan-Dolan tests because they have those helpfully rhyming names. Okay, for many years, there was disagreement among the courts as to whether the Nolan-Dolan test applied only to permit conditions that are administratively imposed and not to things like impact fees that are created by the legislature. That was the law here in Maryland. Maryland courts concluded that it only applies to administrative exactions. It doesn't apply to legislative exactions. Well, in 2004, or 2024, the Supreme Court said no, disagreed with Maryland courts and the other courts that concluded that. They did so in the case of Sheets versus Alarado County. And that involved a county ordinance that required all new development to pay a traffic impact fee based on the type of development and its location within the county. Based on a formula set out in the ordinance, the county required Mr. Sheets to pay a $23,000 fee to obtain a building permit for his small prefabricated house. Mr. Sheets challenged the fee, claiming it violated the Nolan-Dolan test because the county legislature had failed to make an individualized determination that an essential nexus and rough proportionality existed between the traffic impact of his house and the need for the road improvements. The lower court rejected the claim on the grounds that the Nolan-Dolan test did not apply to legislatively-imposed exactions. And the Supreme Court unanimously reversed on that point. Now, that decision, when it came out, immediately sent chills down the spines of land use officials. Because how can a county council or other local legislative body craft an impact fee ordinance that applies throughout the jurisdiction? Legislation can't be property-specific. It's got to apply more broadly. And if so, how can an impact fee ordinance satisfy that constitutional test if it has to be able to provide that, you know, essential nexus and rough proportionality to each property to which it's applied? Recognizing this problem, several members of the Supreme Court, both on the conservative wing and on the liberal wing, went out of their way to leave open the question of whether a legislative impact fee, quote, "must be tailored with the same degree of specificity as a permit condition that targets a particular development." What that means is that the court is leaving open the possibility that legislative exactions might be justifiable based on a more broad brush effort to connect, you know, to satisfy the rough proportionality and essential nexus tests, that it may not have to be as property-specific as do administratively-opposed exactions. Some of the justices disagreed with that. Justice Gorsuch clearly signaled his hostility to the argument. So everyone is watching that space for the next case that comes to the Supreme Court. Most recent footnote on that is that Mr. Sheets, remand from the Supreme Court, pressed his case again. The California courts have again rejected his takings claim, this time concluding that the legislatively-imposed impact fee was sufficiently tailored to satisfy Nolan and Dolan. So everyone expects that case to get up to the Supreme Court in the next couple of years. So watch that space. Right, that's it for takings jurisprudence, which is the real constitutional check on the application of land use restrictions. Now, we're going to talk about equal protection, which also lies behind local planning and zoning, but it's a little bit easier to satisfy. Now, the equal protection clause provides that nor shall any state deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. And the equal protection clause is what lies behind the famous Brown v. Board of Education court case from the 1950s. It's what compelled the desegregation of public schools. And basically, what it requires is that government has to treat similarly situated people similarly. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to treat everyone similarly. You can require doctors to meet more rigorous educational certification requirements than you do, say, landscape architects, because there's more at stake. They're just not similarly situated. The question comes down to, on what basis is the government discriminating? If the government is discriminating on the basis of race or some other suspect class, ethnicity, gender, courts will apply strict scrutiny, and the government is almost certainly going to lose that case. Strict scrutiny is really, really, really difficult to satisfy. But classifications that are based on other considerations are permitted so long as they have a rational basis. That is an incredibly easy standard to meet. So a lot of your fate within the equal protection context really hinges on what test gets applied to you. Now, how does that play out in the land use context? Zoning is, after all, all about discriminating. It's saying this property can be developed industrially. This property can be developed residentially. But you're not doing so on a constitutionally suspect grounds. Again, race, gender, something like that. And it's a rational basis test would apply. And it's rational to distinguish between industrial uses and residential uses because the two have very different effects on the surrounding area. And so, and so long as... So anyhow, that's why the plaintiff in the Euclid case lost its equal protection claim. And it's why the equal protection clause will likely not be as important in your work as the takings clause is going to be. So now, we're going to move on from federal constitutional, you know, the federal constitutional guardrails for take, planning, and zoning, and start talking about planning and zoning proper.
So Adam, before we jump into that, we have a couple of questions that you might want to handle this.
Yeah, this is a perfect time for questions.
Okay. We had one about, it said, what about the house that was built? And I guess it's dealing with the
Lucas.
The Lucas case in terms of whether or not it got built or not.
Yeah, that was, that house, the neighbor's house was built before the line in the sand was drawn. So there were no restrictions on where you could build. If the government had come in and said, we want to raise that house, the government could have done that. They could have exercised eminent domain and removed that house. But of course, if you exercise eminent domain, there's no question you have to pay for it. But my understanding is that the house is still there today, unless it's been knocked down by a hurricane.
Okay, another question is, can you talk about the road access driveway permits and whether denying access may constitute a taking?
Normally, if someone needs access to a property and they have no other access, they are deemed to have an easement by necessity so that they would have the property right to get to that. If the lack, and I'm just kind of playing this out here. I don't know of any cases directly on point. But I think it would hinge on whether the absence of access deprives them of all economically viable use. If there's, if the access road they're seeking is, you know, 10 yards and there's on-street parking, maybe not. If the access road is a half a mile and there's no other way to get to the property, perhaps so. But that's the kind of facts that that would hinge on. Again, I'm not familiar with, you know, a takings case involving those types of facts, but definitely an interesting question and...
Yeah, one thing I would think of is, depends upon how that access was denied. So is it by a private property owner that actually sold a piece of property with no access other than going through another property? Or is it the government that would be in fact denying that? So obviously, the protection is with the government issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think the person probably almost certainly would have an easement by necessity to gain access to their property. And I took the question as meaning the government says, okay, you have that property right, but we're still going to deny you a permit to put in a driveway. And that circumstance is what I was thinking of. If a private, if a private landowner is, of course, putting up a fence across your driveway and blocking you access, that would involve the government, and there'd be no taking.
And usually, you know, state highway, for example, when they have limited access roads, they have procured denying access along those major corridors as part of their right-of-way acquisition program to provide compensations for those types of limitations.
Yeah, and usually when we're talking about limited access to, you know, S H A highways, the people who own the properties that are restricted by those, that limited access, it's not like they're landlocked, that, you know, they can get into other roads that feed into other roads that get into the S H A highway at one of the approved access points. So it makes it less convenient, and it's definitely less profitable. If you're a commercial enterprise, you want to be on that major road. But, you know, you're not being deprived of the ability to access your property.
Okay, one more question, we'll go on then. Does income level count for discrimination?
No. Poverty or wealth level is not a suspect class. So, you know, you might not be able to come up with a rational basis to say, well, we're going to treat rich people differently than poor people. But it's not a protected class. It's not a suspect class. I'm going to get in a little bit further, the weeds. The Supreme Court sometimes, when they feel the need to, will create intermediate scrutiny that's somewhere in between strict scrutiny and rational basis. And I could see in the right circumstances them applying some version of rational basis that's more exacting if a jurisdiction is kind of baldly discriminating against poor people. But outside of that circumstance, you know, it's not a circumstance of strict scrutiny.
Okay, we're done with the questions. Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about planning and zoning. Joe has already talked a little bit about this, about the fact that the state has delegated planning and zoning authority to the counties. Now, as to counties, and how and in which statute the state delegates planning and zoning authority depends on what form of local governments the county has adopted. The charter and code county provisions are set out in the local government article because that's where local powers are laid out. The land use article, by contrast, contains those state laws that commissioner counties are required to implement. Now, these divisions are not absolute. There are land use provisions that apply in charter and code counties. And there are some, so, you know, you can't just look at one book and not the other. But together, these articles are where you can find the bulk of the law that governs counties and municipalities. But to do that, you have to know what form of governance the county has adopted. Joe had a map of this. If you're not a visually, a visual learner, here's a list of the different counties. As you can see, the majority of them have adopted some form of home rule, either charter home rule, meaning that they've adopted essentially a local constitution, their charter, and are exercising planning and zoning powers through that mechanism. Others adopt home rule through a legislative workaround that the General Assembly created in the 1960s, what after it was determined that it was too difficult for local jurisdictions to enact their own charters. So there's also code home rule. And charter home rule and code home rule are very, very similar. The six jurisdictions on the right of your screen are those commissioner counties, meaning that they have not adopted any form of home rule. And the importance of that distinction between home rule and commissioner counties is that home rule gives counties broader legislative authority to, you know, regulate on matters of public import and concomitantly limits the General Assembly's ability to enact legislation for that county. Commissioner counties, by contrast, have far fewer express powers, and thus, the General Assembly has correspondingly greater power to legislate within commissioner county. So whether you're a code or charter home rule on one side of the divide or a commissioner county determines to a great deal how much legislative power the locality has on its own without getting something very specific from the state. Now, let's talk about municipalities. There are 157 incorporated municipalities in Maryland sprinkled throughout the state in all counties except for Howard and Baltimore counties. All incorporated municipalities have charters and all have municipal home rule. Like charter and code counties, municipalities have power to legislate on matters of local concern. And the General Assembly is limited in what types of local laws it can enact in the municipality. With respect to planning and zoning, the statute setting out municipal power can be found at local government article in Title V and in Division 1 of the land use article. One important, a couple of important caveats. Municipal planning authority applies only within municipal boundaries, including areas that are annexed. And a municipal planning and zoning authority can't conflict with M N C, P P C's authority, or W S F C. State delegation of planning and zoning authority comes with some strings attached. The local jurisdiction must adopt a comprehensive plan governing land use within its borders and implementing the state's governing land use within its borders and implementing the state's eight planning principles. Very recently, the nomenclature changed from the state's twelve planning visions to eight planning principles. And those planning principles are set forth in Section One dash two oh one of the land use article. And they include broadly uh things like land, transportation, housing, economy, equity, resilience, place, and ecology. Once the comprehensive plan is in place, the local jurisdiction's zoning and land use regulations must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, what does it mean for a local land use, for local land use decisions to be consistent with comprehensive plan? Now, that issue was the subject of the famous or infamous Terrapin Run decision of Maryland's highest court. Uh, the Terrapin Run development was to be a nine hundred and thirty-five acre, four thousand three hundred unit planned residential development in an undeveloped area of Allegheny County adjacent to the Green Ridge State Forest off of Scenic Route forty. The comprehensive plan stated that the area was to be zoned for agriculture, forestry, and conservation. The developer sought a special exception for construction of the development and the Allegheny County Board of Appeals approved it, including that the statutory phrase "consistent with" meant only that the proposed use be in harmony with the plan's general outlines. The case was litigated up through the courts and in two thousand and eight, Maryland's highest court concluded that comprehensive plans are quote advisory guides only and therefore not mandatory for local planning decisions. In the very next legislative session, the General Assembly expressly overturned the Terrapin Run decision and codified a decision of "consistent with." That decision, now set forth at Land Use Article Section One three oh three, provides that local land use decisions must further and not be contrary to the various elements of or various elements of the comprehensive plan, including those related to development patterns, land uses, and density and intensity. Now, there's still a lot of room for debate as to what does it mean to further the a comprehensive plan and not be contrary to it. But the courts have subsequent subsequently concluded that the two thousand and nine legislation means that comprehensive plans were no longer advisory but were now a quote "true regulatory device." At this point, however, we're still talking about a comprehensive plan, a very general document that shows broadly how the jurisdiction plans to grow in the next uh decade. We're now going to start talking about how those broad plans are translated into property-specific requirements. The next step in that process in translating the plan to individual properties is uh comprehensive zoning. Like the comprehensive plan, comprehensive zoning remains a legislative act that operates on a broad scale. It is meant to apply uniformly throughout each of the zones created in the comprehensive plan with certain exceptions that we'll get into. But zoning starts to define how properties within the different zones can be developed. So um it the it has to cover a substantial area of uh the jurisdiction, be the product of careful study and control and direct uses of all land in substantially all of the jurisdiction. Now, that's talked about comprehensive planning, comprehensive zoning. Now we're talking about zoning ordinances where we're getting narrower still and starting to dictate more or at least regulate more closely what can happen on particular pieces of property. Zoning ordinances are also legislatively enacted. They're essentially laws. Uh, they regulate density, intensity of development, and they permit land uses by right or as a conditional use. By right is a self-explanatory term. Uh, you have the right to build a house in a residentially zoned area. Conditional uses uh are a little trickier. Uh, conditional uses are often referred to as special exceptions. Terms are used interchangeably. They are uses that are available to the property owner provided that certain conditions are met. They are importantly here, they are baked into the ordinance itself. So the conditional use must be compatible with the neighborhood and further the comprehensive plan and any adverse effect on surrounding properties must not uh must be different from the effect that the the use would have if it occurred someplace else within the zone. So a dentist's office is in a residential area is a common example. It's a business, but it is compatible with the surrounding residential use and serves the people who live there. So long as the area surrounding the conditional use is not adversely affected in some unique or different way, the conditional use is going to be allowed. Now, the point of that unique and different impact test is that because the conditional use is baked into the zoning ordinance, the legislature has already made a determination that the impact of, say, a dentist's office is not going to be disruptive in a residential area, generally speaking. So they've already made that legislative determination and courts aren't going to touch that. So the only way you can uh avoid that is by showing that in this particular spot, this special exception with which otherwise would be okay is a problem because it has some unique and different impact. Now, when talking about Euclid and comprehensive planning and zoning, we mentioned how um, you know, zones should be uniform. You should have industrial zones, commercial zones, residential zones. That's the whole point of Euclidean zoning, um to restrict land uses with it within a zone uniformly so that everyone in that zone equally shares the benefits and burdens of that designation. You enjoy your house safe in the knowledge that there won't be a lead smelter next door and your neighbor, even though he can't build a lead smelter, at least knows that he can, you know, live on his property and won't have a lead smelter next door. So each property benefits um from the mutual uniform treatment of the properties within the zone. Now, conditional uses is just one way to provide for some variation within those zones. But there are others, some of which are allowed, others not. Floating zones are an are an allowed way of providing for additional variation within the zone. Floating zones are established legislatively in the zoning ordinance. Um, and there are a classification for a specific purpose that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It doesn't apply to a specific property in the zoning map, but floats over it. It just says somewhere within this zone, there can be a grocery store, for example. That the actual placement of that gra- grocery store in a particular area would later be accomplished through a zoning map uh amendment. Like conditional uses, however, the floating zone must remain compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Grocery store, unless you want trying to create a food desert, usually is might be considered compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood because, you know, having one nearby is helpful to the people who live in that area. So moving on to some other uh examples of spec- uh property-specific zoning, um we get to some kind of pejorative terms here. Spot zoning is a pejorative term. You'll you'll hear it. Um, uh, you'll hear the phrase illegal spot zoning uh a fair bit. Spot zoning is not permitted if it is inconsistent with the uses in the remainder of the district and, this is the important part, is done solely for the owner's private interests. So if you are zoning um a an area of your jurisdiction and in the middle of a residential um zone, you plop down a lead smelter, well, that's not, that's going to be inconsistent with the uses of the remainder of the district. And let's say you don't do a lead smelter, but you put in a, you know, a bowling alley or something. And it's, well, maybe it's not inconsistent, but you're really doing it just to benefit the person who owns that property. It really isn't being done to improve the lives of the people within the zone. That's, you know, going to be uh held to be uh illegal spot zoning. But it is legal if it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and it bears some substantial relationship to public health, safety, and the welfare. You know, a drugstore might work, a barber shop might work. It's going to be a fact-specific determination about whether a particular type of uh spot zoning is legal or illegal. But you'll hear it as a pejorative term. Just know that it's sometimes okay, sometimes not okay. And the rules surrounding spot zoning, particularly the focus on on the 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 owner's private interests, highlight how legislatures and courts are concerned about the possibility of corruption in the land use context. Um, after all, how land is zoned can have financial implications for the landowner. So these rules are designed to ensure that zoning is being done for the common good and not for an individual property owner's private property. Contract zoning is another uh form of property-specific zoning that is that is not permitted. Contract zoning is where you where there is an agreement between the zoning authority and property about how land is to be zoned. It those are prohibited because they are kind of a backroom deal. Uh, it it permits special privilege. It disrupts the comprehensive nature of the zoning plan by creating this property-specific uh exception and it circumvents the formal exercise of local zoning powers, which are supposed to be done openly with public hearings and uh what have you. So uh contract zoning is never uh permitted. You might be familiar with the um the term developer rights and responsibilities agreements. Those two are contracts that affect land use, but they are legal provided that they comply with the legislative rules for them. They're legal because uh development rights and responsibilities agreements, D R R A's is their acronym, don't alter the zoning of the land. Instead, they lay out how the landowner will go about developing the property consistently with its zoning. That type of arrangement doesn't undermine the uniform- uniformity of Euclidean zoning and that's why they're legal in Maryland, whereas contract zoning is not. Piecemeal zoning is another way to provide for variation within a zone. Piecemeal variation um is a parcel-specific change in the zoning classification. It occurs after the original or comprehensive zoning and it's based on a property-specific factual inquiry that then leads to a legislative change in the zoning of that one particular parcel. The test here is called the change in mistake rule. Piecemeal zoning is only allowed if it is a response to a mistake in fact in the original zoning or comprehensive zoning or there is evidence of a substantial change in the character of a neighborhood since the original zoning or comprehensive zoning. Now, mistake here means that the legislative body's assumptions were wrong. As for change, it has to be a really substantial change within the surrounding labor neighborhood and not something, you know, that's miles away. And kind of importantly, it can't be something that was in front of the legislative body when it last comprehensively zoned the area. So if everyone knew that the area was going to grow dramatically in the next ten years and the legislature comprehensively planned and zoned on the basis of that assumption, the fact that there has been that type of uh significant growth is not going to be a mistake or change. So it's it's difficult to satisfy the change requirement to show that an area has grown in population. It has to be truly unexpected level of growth. Like the rules against spot zoning and contract zoning, the change mistake ru- rule reflects the law's distaste for individuals zoning decisions that are made for the benefit of a particular individual as opposed to the needs of the entire community and also the the legis- the the desire to um to give effect to the legislative choices uh made in the first instance when you're embarking on a comprehensive uh planning and zoning and not allow uh property-specific changes thereafter. Uh, one important footnote here is that um uh you uh uh just just because the situation satisfies the change in mistake rule doesn't mean that the government is obligated to grant the piecemeal zoning. It just means that it would be legally sufficient if the if the legislator decided to do that. Variances are um, we're drilling down even more narrowly. These are uh modifications to requirements or restrictions in zoning law that uh apply at the property-specific level and that affect the density, bulk, dimensions, or um area requirements of the property. Now, these requirements flow from Land Use Article Section Four two oh six. The uh which applies only to uh in commissioner counties. Count uh charter and uh code counties, however, have established uh similar requirements as I believe municipalities have as well. Note that Land Use Four two oh six, however, um allows only size or area variances and thus effectively prohibits use variances. And use variances allow for a use that is not otherwise allowed for within the zoning area. That starts to sound a lot more like piecemeal zoning, spot zoning, those sorts of things. Instead, variances are focused on area uses. So here's an example to kind of illustrate uh how variances will work. Uh, a landowner proposes to build the house on the small lot to the right. Uh, according to local ordinances, the house must be more than a certain distance from all neighboring structures. This is referred to as the minimum distance separation requirement or M D S. The only way the landowner can comply with the, well, note that there's a barn on the property next door and the only way that the landowner can comply with the M D S is to move his house to the right so that it complies, it's the requisite amount of distance from the neighboring barn. But if the landowner does that, it would move the residence with it into the side yard setback that applies within the zoning ordinance. So he can't, the landowner can't comply with both aspects of the local code. Here, the landowner is entitled to a variance because the strict application of both ordinances would result in a hardship to the owner. He can't build a house. The hardship is due to conditions peculiar to the size of the property. There isn't room enough to accommodate both setbacks. And the hardship was not caused by the applicant. The barn was already there. I didn't talk about it, but those um those, that test was laid out on this previous uh slide. Again, focusing on whether there's been a hardship, whether the hardship was due to conditions peculiar to the property and whether the hardship was uh caused by the applicant. And then, again, continuing this theme about um anti-favoritism, the variance must not confer some sort of special privilege denied to others. Vesting. We're kind of jumping around to kind of uh uh major points of 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 land use, Maryland land use law that are all kind of loosely related but um uh are are fairly different. Vesting uh uh ordinarily when law the law changes. Say a new land use ordinance is adopted. The new law will apply to all uh pending matters. That can be very disruptive to development projects that have already um um input the investment of substantial. of substantial sums of money based on the pre-existing regulatory landscape. The concept of vesting is designed to strike a balance between the developer's reliance interests, they've already spent all this money, and the community's interest in determining how it will grow. Maybe we don't want lead smelters in this area anymore, and so we want to change the rules. So the vesting rules provide that once a development has proceeded to a certain point in the development process, the developer has the right to continue with the development despite the intervening change in the rules. And a jurisdiction's vesting rules are critical for developers, for the opponents of development, and for local jurisdictions. Vesting rules vary by state. Maryland is known as a late vesting state. That's because vesting occurs in Maryland when the landowner has obtained a lawful building permit, begins building in good faith, and completes substantial construction on the permit. And what that last prong means is that you can't just have graded the site. You can't just have put, say, you know, poured concrete footers that are not visible to the public. You have to have done enough construction that someone walking by the property would see it and think, okay, they've already started building the structure that was permitted under the prior rules, so they ought to be allowed to finish it. Other states are known as early vesting states because their rules provide for rights to vest without actually beginning work. The developer just has to show significant expenditures in reliance on a governmental permit. And some states do not require a building permit at all. Instead, rights vest upon any kind of site specific governmental approval, such as a preliminary plan. But in Maryland, you need both a building permit and the commencement of work. And that difference between being an early vesting state and a late vesting state is something that gets factored into whether a jurisdiction is considered, you know, to be welcoming to development or opposed to development. Because again, late vesting makes it easier for the local jurisdiction and opponents of development to change the rules, to block a project that they don't want. And early vesting allows for developers to continue with projects despite the fact that the local community no longer wants to see it built. Moving on, let's talk a little bit about boards of appeal. Actually, let's stop for questions because once we get into boards of appeals, the stuff starts to change a little bit.
Okay, well, we have three questions on here. One question, I think, related to the relationship of a county, a charter county and a municipality. It's, you know, what about small municipalities that have a charter home rule within a county that has commissioner-led? So how did, how did this, the relationship of a charter county and a municipality in terms of some of your land use decision-making?
The municipality exercises the planning and zoning authorities in that circumstance. Chuck can always correct me if I'm wrong because once we get into the, you know, kind of where the rubber meets the road and how these things work out in practice, Chuck is a much, much better sense of that than I do. I'm more in the world of constitutional law. But in that circumstance, the municipality is going to be the one to exercise the planning and zoning authority. But, you know, the county, you're still going to have a relationship with the county. If the municipality wants to annex land, the county participates in that process in certain ways in terms of providing public services. There can be an overlap between county and municipal public services. You work with your county to find out a way to avoid double taxation of the residents in the municipality. So there's a variety of different ways where municipalities and county officials have to work together as the municipality exercises its powers.
Yeah, and just as you noted, Prince George's County, particularly, and to a lesser degree, Montgomery County have a unique situation where some municipalities do not have planning and zoning authority in all of the plan, the land use and permitting. It goes through the county in that respect. Again, another question for you, Bradham. How does the concept of economic justice fit into the planning and zoning landscape? I've seen SHA back off on actions when mentioned, so I guess that's dealing with environmental justice and economic, those types of things, and how that may factor into any land use decision. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, when we're talking about comprehensive plans, comprehensive zoning, zoning ordinances, those are legislative enactments. So the legislature can take environmental, you know, justice issues into account when establishing those laws essentially. As for SHA, SHA, whenever it builds a road, is going to have to comply with things like the National Environmental Policy Act and other statutes that require them to take into consideration environmental impacts of their projects, and environmental justice is part of that. So SHA is always looking at that very carefully and sometimes will, you know, decide to route a road differently to avoid impacts to a historically, you know, underserved and overburdened community because, wow, there's just a long track record of those types of road projects being put smack through those types of neighborhoods. So, you know, these days SHA is trying to avoid that if it can.
Okay. Next one question is, how do you determine the assumptions of the legislative body when you're deciding if something has, was a mistake, that change of mistake? Who bears the burden of proof to that?
The plaintiff is going to bear the burden of proof on that. And, you know, I, normally the way you establish that is by looking at the legislative history. Whenever a local legislative body enacts something, there are summaries of the bill that are put out. There are hearings at which people describe the bill. There's testimony that's provided that goes into the hopper before the legislature enacts the measure. So you'd go back and look all at that and see, here is legislator's statements during the debates on this bill saying that this area is not going to grow very much, so we should leave it residentially zoned. And low and behold, boom, the area has grown an awful lot over the next 10 years. I think you'd point to that kind of stuff to show that the legislature's assumptions were mistaken.
Okay. One last question here. So a grocery store in an approved zone cannot be stopped simply because a minority of the town citizens and a few non-citizens don't like, insert grocery store name here, and the state said grocery store company doesn't fit within the character of the town. That being said, part of the most recent comprehensive plan. So I guess this gets to your vesting issue of some citizens may not like what's being proposed, but it's allowed in the zoning ordinance, as I understand it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, if this is a vesting question, it would, it would all hinge on how far along the grocery store is when the people opposing the project get, you know, accumulate the legislative muscle to change the law and block the, in an effort to block the grocery store. If the grocery store is there and it has begun visible construction and they've already been issued a building permit, their rights will vest it and they'll be able to go ahead and continue the work even though a majority of the population opposes it.
Yeah, and just from my own personal experience, typically zoning ordinances for a particular use, say, commercial, it gives you a long list of permitted uses. And sometimes a developer in, you know, proposing or participating in the comprehensive rezoning process, oh, I'm going to put a grocery store here, and they get it rezoned commercial. Well, you're allowing all the whole array of permitted uses within that designation. You can't always rely upon someone's promise, oh, I'm going to put a grocery store, I'm going to, I'm going to put a Trader Joe's there. Well, Trader Joe's may or may not come, but you may get some other type of commercial use that the community didn't want. So from my experience, you tend to want to make sure you're comfortable with the permitted uses within a zoning category, and does that zoning category truly reflect what you have as a comprehensive plan, land use designation, whether or not it's compatible with the surrounding area? So there's an important relationship between the zoning categories and the land uses that are in your comprehensive plan. Okay. I think, hold on, I may have one more, one more. Planning commission approvals, grocery store, it was challenged by the Board of Appeals upheld a decision that was challenged, and it was sent to the circuit court, which upheld the previous decision, and that was challenged now to the Court of Appeals. So good times.
Maybe I'll just explain, yeah, the situation.
Thank you. Why is it, is there not a sunset rule for construction of all developers purchasing land through, throughout Maryland? I live in an incorporated city and they have those rules. Doesn't it make a life easier for housing development to actually happen to have sunset of the rules of construction?
I'm not sure what the sunset rule of construction means.
So I'll just give you my experience of this. So sometime, some jurisdictions have, once your building permit may expire or become void, if there's not continuous activity going on for a certain period of time. So after six months, a permit may become invalid, and even though you have physical construction showing on that, that permit and that use may not have fully gotten all the way through the approval process to be received in use of occupancy. So their vesting may wane at a certain point in that process if they don't continue to build to actually get to a certificate of occupancy.
Right. And sunset rules, you know, in, one of the criticisms of early vesting states is that, you know, you might get a site plan approval or something like that, and your rights are vested, and then the landowner just sits on it and says, okay, now I've got site plan approval, it can't be changed, my rights vested, and I'm just going to sit back. You know, it improves the value of the property and I'll develop it some other time. Well, circumstances will change over time, and so putting in a sunset provision as part of your vesting rules is a way of getting at that problem so that people come in and, you know, seek to pursue a development project and have their rights vested only so long as that they're actually working on it. If they're just using it for investment purposes and sitting on it, that's not going to get you any protection from a change in law. So it is a, it is a good tool to use.
Some jurisdictions, in answering this, some jurisdictions do actually give time periods for certain levels of approval, such as site plans or subdivisions along the way, and those may, again, give them a greater period of time to get proper financing to do that. One last question, then we're going to move on. Does a town in Worcester have the ability to refuse a kind of land use suggestion if it does not agree with the town and the town council, and the town council, excuse me, and does not agree with the town and the town council and the residents want it? Again, the uniqueness of those situations, we probably don't want to weigh in too much about that. There's a lot of facts that we would need to. But if you want to reach out to us later through Joe, we can provide some guidance. But we would, one of the things, you didn't have your disclaimer at the beginning of this, Adam, is that always contact your local town and county attorney if you question about a particular property. We are not providing you advice on any particular project or situation in your community. Okay, go ahead, Tim. You can go forward.
Yeah, I ethically can't do that. I can't give you advice. I've got to, because I only represent the Department of Planning. Okay, so let's talk about boards of appeal. In charter and code home rule counties, boards of appeal are authorized by, but not required, and the local jurisdiction has the power to define the types of cases that its board of appeal hears. As a result, some counties have authorized their board of appeal to hear non-zoning cases such as retirement issues and animal control cases, whereas in, in commissioner counties, there are much more, they're much more limited in what they can hear. But all boards of appeals, as their name suggests, sit and hear appeals from certain types of land use decisions. Now, yeah, I've got something mixed up here. Yeah, in non-charter counties and municipalities, they're required, but they can only hear and decide on these three categories. Appeals where an error is alleged in administrative enforcement or application of local land use law, and conditional uses, special exceptions, and applications for variances. In charter and code counties, they are authorized, they're not required, but all charter and code counties have one, and their jurisdiction is established by local law because charter counties have greater flexibility to legislate in their own public interest. So they can establish that board of appeals hear a variety of other things, including, you know, administrative actions on licenses, permits, what have you. Now, across the board, wherever they appear, though, boards of appeals are required to follow certain types of procedures. They, they must be publicly announced, they're subject to the Open Meetings Act, their meetings must be recorded, witness testimony is provided under oath, they must comply with local rules and procedures on, you know, on the process of public hearings. Deliberation and voting in most cases has to be done in open session. The record must reflect the vote of each member on the matter voted upon, and there must be a written opinion that explains the board's reasoning and include factual findings and legal conclusions. Now, all of this sounds a lot like a court, and in fact, boards of appeals are classified as quasi-judicial bodies. They're not courts per se, but they pretty much function as courts within the administrative context. Now, the fact that they are quasi-judicial bodies means that their factual findings are given deference on appeal. If there's an appeal, the circuit court's not going to have a trial where he hears witnesses' testimony. Instead, the circuit court's going to look at the record that was developed by the board of appeals. The court, though, is not bound by the board's conclusions of law or its application of the law to the facts. That's what I mean when I say that appeals of boards of appeals decisions are heard on the record. The record is established by the board of appeals, then gets shipped up to the courts that evaluate the legal arguments based on that factual record. Some other rules that apply to board of appeals members, kind of just like the Maryland courts, they're subject to certain types of ethical rules, one of which is that board of appeals members can't have ex parte communications. That means that while a matter is pending before the board of appeals, a member of the board can't have, cannot communicate with a party about the matter that's pending before the board outside of a formal hearing. And if such an ex parte communication occurs, the board member has to disclose that to all of the parties and summarize the communication on the record. Now, this should, because board of appeals are like courts, this should seem kind of sensible because... Because, you know, you can't go up to a, a judge that's, you run into a judge who's presiding over a trial that you're the plaintiff at. You've run into him at a, at a grocery store. You can't go up to him and start talking about the case. The judge is gonna shut that down immediately. A legislator, you can. Go up to the legislator and talk to them about the, uh, matters that are pending before the legislative body. But because the board of appeals is not like a legislator, it's more like a, a court, you can't go up to the board of appeals member. And if you do, they have to comply with these rules for disclosing that ex parte communication. All right, now, uh, that's a perfect segue to talk a little bit about ethics. The state ethics laws prohibit, uh, improprieties and the appearances of impropriety. And they're designed to ensure fair dealings by officials holding positions of public trust. General provisions article, um, section five eight oh seven requires counties and municipalities to enact provisions on conflicts of interest, financial disclosure and lobbying. Those locally enacted ethics provisions must be similar, that's the statutory term, must be similar to state ethics laws, but they don't have to be identical. So a county's or a municipality's, um, provisions can vary from state law in minor ways or in ways that account for a local context that is different from the state context. Some examples of, uh, conflicts of interest. A, um, official, uh, government employees may not hold outside employment that would impair their impartiality of independence of, of judgment. For example, uh, a forester in DNR's forest, uh, forest service can't serve as a member of a local planning commission because the commission had duties relating to site plan approval and forestry management activities that were regulated by DNR. The DNR official would be kind of serving two masters kind of thing. So that was not allowed. Uh, you can't use the prestige of your office for private gain. Now you might think, well, you know, my, my office isn't all that prestigious, but still, when you start saying, I am a planning commissioner and I'm supporting my neighbor's, um, you know, you know, application to, uh, you know, run a daycare center out of their property. You're, you're throwing your official weight behind some, a private person's interests. And that's what the prestige of office is, uh, designed to prohibit. Confidential information, you can't use confidential information required in your official capacity for your own benefit or that of another. So if you're, if you learn in your, uh, planning role that a, a developer is targeting land for acquisition and development, you can't tell a friend about it so that they can go out and buy it, um, and, uh, and, and make a tidy profit. In terms of, uh, legal or economic interests, you cannot hold, uh, or acquire an interest in a business that contracts with or is regulated by the agency that you work for or be employed by a business that contracts with or is regulated by your agency. Nor can you represent any party for a contingent fee before any local body. Now, these rules apply both to you and to qualifying, uh, relatives. Spouses, parents, cha- children, ancestors. Other conflicts of interest, subject to limited exceptions. You can't solicit or accept gifts of more than nominal value, twenty dollars, from any person who is regulated by or does or seeks to do business with the official's agency. And after you've left employment, you can't act as the paid representative of another in connection with something that you worked significantly on. Uh, that doesn't mean that you can't have been involved in, with the general contours of the program um, under which the specific matter, um, you know, moved forward. But you, if you worked on that specific matter, you can't work on it again after you left, uh, after you leave for the private sector. When is it appropriate necessary for you to recuse yourself? So let's say a planning commissioner spouse has a development project that is coming to the commission for site plan approval. That one, you're gonna have to recuse yourself because this, your spouse is a qualifying representative and they're, uh, coming to, or a qualifying relative, and they're coming to you for a, um, an approval that you are empowered to give them as a member of the site, uh, of the planning commission. So recusal means that you can't participate in any part of the matter. And unlike the earlier circumstance with respect to ex parte communications, disclosure is not enough. You have to recuse yourself. Now, you probably have a lot of questions about ethics, but if you have those questions, you have to bring them to the state ethics wish, uh, commission. There's their website. They are, they love answering questions about how the ethics law applies. They very much encourage people to call them. They much prefer that than to have a train wreck later on. So if you have questions, reach out to them. They know the ins and outs, um, very well. I now want to just do a quick, uh, check on learning, uh, see if we can stay somewhat on schedule here.
We, we have, we have one, just one question for you. With regard to quasi judicial nature of boards and appeals, are boards of appeals required to conduct hearings like a trial? I.e. allowing counsel for opponents of, in a special exception to cross-examine witnesses for the applicant?
I think that can depend on the local rules that apply to those types of proceedings. The, the, the witness testimony has to be under oath. My guess is most jurisdictions do require or do allow for cross-examination. And I'd be a little surprised if they don't. But this isn't a, you know, criminal constitution, uh, criminal context where the right to cr- uh, cross-examine is constitutionally required. It's a good question. I, I don't know the specific answer, kind of thinking out loud.
Check the county or town attorney.
Yeah, they would almost certainly know off the top of their head.
Okay.
All right. First question, development rights in Maryland do not vest until construction is complete? No, uh, the applicant obtains government approval on a preliminary plan. No, that's the case in, uh, some early vesting states. The applicant has a building permit and has made visible changes to the property thereby giving notice to the public. That's right. That's the, uh, in a summary of the test that applies in Maryland. Public notice is printed in a local newspaper. Well, no, there is a public notice component to it, but in the, in a soft way, there's no requirement that it be printed in a local newspaper. A regulatory taking occurs when, A, your lawyer says so? It's not a bad answer. It is a very difficult, uh, uh, question to answer. So, um, talking to your lawyer about whether something constitutes a taking is always your first step. But no, that's not the answer. Uh, a use is not permitted under current rules. No, that's, um, wouldn't necessarily mean a taking because a different type of use might well be permitted that would give you, uh, the opportunity to develop your land. A regulation removes all economic value in a property, yes. If all economic value is removed and you're in Mr. Lucas's situation, that will be a constant, that will be a taking. D, when it is determined that a variance is needed? No, a variance is one way to avoid a taking. That's kind of what the whole hardship principle is about, to find a way to relax some of these rules that's so that someone can build their house. But it's not, um, it, it doesn't mean that every time there is a variance needed, that, uh, that a taking has occurred. An unconstitutional exaction occurs when the exaction has nothing to do with the governmental purpose for the exaction. Correct. That's the Nolan case, the absence of an essential nexus. The amount of the exaction far exceeds the project's impact. Also correct, that's the Dolan case that set up the rough proportionality test. C, there is both an essential nexus and rough proportionality between the exaction and the governmental purpose for the exaction. Now, that's the test for when it is not a taking. Okay, a hearing before a board of public, uh, board of appeals must be recorded? Yes. Beheld in the evening? No, sometimes they are, but they don't have to be. Have testimony taken under oath? Yes. And include the recorded vote or failure to vote of each member? Yes, again. Counties and municipalities must enact public official, um, official ethics rules for which of the following? Lobbying? Yes, all of them. Ex parte communications from a party to a board of public appeals member? A, should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision making? No. Always require recusal of the board member? No, that's the town, that's the case when we're talking about a conflict of interest, not when we're talking about a, uh, an ex parte communication. Must be disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record? Correct. Should be kept confidential under one or more executive privileges? Nope, it's not the right answer. And that is it. So thank you for your patience with the, the presentation there. Still learning the Zoom process and having to read off of paper documents at the same time I scroll through these, uh, of these things. So I'm gonna stop, uh, sharing and then Joe, you're gonna.
You're great. Yeah, thank you, Adam. Very well done. I know everybody's really engaged with your presentation. We are gonna take a brief break. Yeah, getting some thank yous in the chats, Adam. So we're gonna take a brief break, come back at five thirty and we'll get to a comprehensive plan. So get, uh, get a drink, go to the restroom, whatever you need to do. Uh, we'll see you in six minutes. All right, it's five thirty. Welcome back. I'm sure we'll have a few stragglers coming in. Um, but we're gonna go ahead and get started to stay on track. We appreciate the time you've spent with us already, just a little bit more. Uh, now we're gonna talk about the comprehensive plan. And so I have a chat question for you all to insert some thoughts. One, uh, two, couple options here. What, uh, if you've worked on comprehensive plans, let us know and let us know your general thoughts about them. Or, uh, what are the components? What do comprehensive plans have in them? Uh, feel free to, or just any thought you have comprehensive plans, uh, you can start entering those into the chat. Okay, uh, so here, uh, comprehensive plans, uh, represent the planning value, uh, planning values of the community of those who drafted it. Uh, and they have multiple purposes. Some of them are listed here on the screen, uh, but, uh, by no means are they limited to this. They, you know, going back to one of the essential purposes of, uh, planning and zoning that Adam mentioned, essentially it's to protect the public health, safety and welfare. We talked about, uh, vital resources to conserve and preserve early on when I was, uh, one of my first slides and you all provided some examples in the chat. Uh, they, uh, focus on having a well-designed built environment that actually functions from the, from infrastructure and transportation, uh, to facilities and amenities. Just make sure that it fits together well. Uh, predictability and transparency are very important. People, uh, stakeholders, residents, staff, elected officials, uh, really should be able to read a comprehensive plan and understand the direction of the community wants to go. Uh, and so things are, are not as surprising. And of course, things change over time. You can amend a comprehensive plan. They still should, uh, have a, uh, a set, provide a sense of predictability and understanding to the community. And then also very, very key is public part case, participation, uh, both from the plan drafting process to the plan implementation process. Uh, the best plans, uh, are, are grounded in public outreach, public involvement and public input. Um, land use, uh, we've talked about the land use article a lot and land use article three dash two zero one describes the process for a plan preparation. It says that a planning commission shall prepare a plan by studying the present conditions, projections of future growth and relation to neighboring jurisdictions. We're going to dig, uh, really deeply into what a PC's role, uh, P, uh, planning commission's role looks like here because planning commissions uh, are the shepherds of the planning commission at, uh, for Maryland's juris, uh, municipalities and counties. So we talked about visions before I talked, I mentioned the nineteen ninety-two Economic Growth Resource Protection and Planning Act, which originally established the, uh, the, the planning, uh, the original seven planning visions. It grew over time. And then just this, uh, past session, twenty twenty-five, the Maryland Department of Planning shepherded, uh, SB two sixty-six and HB two eighty-six, which converted the twelve planning visions into the eight sustainable growth planning principles. Uh, when we say replace the twelve visions, much, many of the visions are basically all of the visions are embodied in these principles. Uh, and some of them are consolidated together. What you see here are the intent statements. You will find these in the, uh, in statute describing each of these. And we did add a, a few new ones and the new ones are, uh, equity, resilience and place. And we are, right now, we, we developed an implementation guidance, uh, document with, in partnership over many months with other state agencies and that's supposed to be published very soon. Uh, we're all eagerly waiting it. I think it's probably going to be early next month, but don't quote me on that. Um, a lot of work went into it and, uh, we're excited to have it published. That will help flesh these out a little bit more and communicate to planning commissions and the general public and other state, uh, agencies how not only can, how they can implement them, but all they also include them and advance them in their comprehensive plans. Um, so, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, has, uh, it's both a process and a product. Uh, it's, it represents the community's vision for the future. This is, you'll see the word vision like you see it here for towns of Sykesville often in the comprehensive, in the name of a comprehensive plan. It's usually something that's established very early on in the comprehensive planning development process. It should look both backwards and forwards, right? What are the existing conditions of the, of the community now from a demographic standpoint, from a, you know, infrastructure, from a land use perspective, how, where, they often have, uh, historical components. How has the community grown and changed over time? What are the current trends we are seeing? Because those, and will those trends can, can continue in the future? Is our current plan serving us well? Did it serve us well? What do we need to change about it to, um, uh, maximize on our a, uh, assets? Uh, counter trends that we may not like to be seen as much. Um, but it also, it always looks backward to the present and forward. And then it establishes goals and objectives and policies, uh, actions, strategies, all sorts of words that can be used to realize the vision. Um, Maryland, uh, statute. Sorry, um, sorry, this is getting ahead of myself. Uh, so things that should be inventoried, um, could include demographics, community facilities, transportation networks, acres of land use, sensitive areas. It always involves analysis. What are the conditions of our roads, both from the physical makeup, but also to their congestion? Uh, but also think, uh, other forms of transportation, bike, pedestrian, um, routes and networks. Uh, what is our employment growth? What is our residential capacity? What are our green and waterfront, uh, water infrastructure needs? Um, and then you want to include recommendations and implementation strategies. What we, what can we, you know, you can establish a goal, you can establish a vision. We know we were, we're going to get, but you still have to do work after the plan's adopted to get there. And these would be implementation strategies. So, uh, anything from business incentives to zoning, Chuck's going to talk more about zoning later on. Uh, funding partnerships, policies, like if you're faced with a decision, land use decision, you know, what policies will you use to help inform that decision making? And then finally, how will it adapt over time? You should always be monitoring your implementation of your comp, comprehensive plan. It's not something you develop and say, whoo, we're done with that. We don't have to worry about it again for ten years. Right? You want to be monitoring it. How, uh, is it achieving what we wanted to achieve? Are we doing it, taking the implementation steps we need it, we needed to? And if there is their need for change, you can always amend it. Maryland statute requires certain elements for comprehensive plans dependent on charter status and jurisdictional status. Here's just a few of them on, you'll see right there, uh, water resources, examples like, um, uh, wa, uh, wastewater and drinking water. Um, the municipal growth element is specific, only municipalities need to develop these as it makes sense. And it, it describes both how the municipality plans to grow internally and externally through annexations. Um, and it's important. I know there was a question earlier about municipal growth in comparison to county growth. Uh, there is a requirement in land use article that municipalities, uh, should work with their, uh, with their counties in the development of the municipal growth element. Uh, that's a key area of inter-jurisdictional coordination that's important for planning. I mean, inter-jurisdictional coordination is important for all comprehensive plans because we know the transportation networks, water resources, a lot of things, infrastructure extend across different jurisdictional boundaries. Uh, sensitive areas, things like, uh, critical areas, if you're in tidal waters, wetlands, habitat areas. There's some optional elements or, uh, like kind of if this, then this. One is a mineral resource element. There's current geologic information, uh, available that a mineral resource element is required. This would include everything from like quarrying to mining. Uh, another one is fisheries. If you're on tidal waters. Here are some more. Um, the newest one you'll see at the bottom there. Well, uh, land use is obviously one of the big ones, right? We always think about land use. This is connected to zoning. Um, community facilities include schools, um, you know, uh, parks, fire and rescue. Uh, the newest one is the housing element. Uh, this was, uh, required as of June first, twenty twenty for the first time. Uh, but I mean, housing, housing has been an essential part of planning since the beginning and most jurisdictions included a housing element in their comprehensive plans, even before it was required. It was always an optional element. Uh, this was amended in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four to include fair housing for all jurisdictions. The original housing element requirements, uh, that became effective on June first, twenty twenty focused on affordability. All right. Catch up here. Uh, some optional elements, uh, that could be included, uh, are listed on the screen. It's kind of more of like suggestions, you know, you really have a lot of flexibility with your comprehensive plans. Uh, just because an element or, uh, an idea or a topic isn't included in the, uh, land use article. I mean, you could still explore that if that's important to your community and it's part of your vision, uh, and it's, uh, something you want to advance. So comprehensive planning is not easy. Uh, there are a lot of different viewpoints you need to, to grapple with and, and navigate. Um, you know, some classic ones would be the conflict, potential conflict between property rights and the desire to preserve rural land or the desire for maybe slower growth. Uh, there's also the, you're, you're, you have a need for more housing, you know, the community expresses that. Uh, but you also have a concern that your facilities might not be adequate to provide, you know, to keep up with that housing, anything from water and sewer to schools um, or transportation. Uh, so this, it's, it's not easy. You'll have conflicting viewpoints, uh, but it's important that you engage the broadest cross-section of your community as you can, um, to make sure you hear everybody's opinion because, you know, I think many of you have been on boards for a while, know that might be the same people that are coming out to every meeting. Um, they might have more time to come out to public meetings and it seems like they always, they have the loudest voice and they're speaking for everybody, but they might not be. Uh, so it's really important to engage everybody. Uh, one thing I would like you to also put in the chat right now. What are, what are the different kinds of stakeholders you would consider important to engage in the comprehensive plan process? Right? I mean, I'll give you one, obviously residents, that's the easiest one, but think about it specifically, what are, what are some stakeholder groups or types of stakeholders that you think have a unique position or, uh, opinion or perspective on the community? That they should, you really should make sure that you engage in the comprehensive plan process. So please put, uh, uh, some lists of those stakeholders in the, and I see some coming in. Excellent. Um, so, you know, here's just some on this, on the screen, you'll see some more coming up here, right? Obviously residents and landowners, probably your primary stakeholders, they live in your community. Uh, but also people that might not live in your community, but still have an investment, right? Such as business or employers. Uh, advocacy or community groups that, uh, may, they, you know, they, they engage just through their normal work, certain segments of the community, or they have certain opinions or certain focus areas, they're important to engage. But also, uh, other government agencies, right? I think a, a, a big part that's often, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't say it's normally missing, but it might not be the first thing that people think about is, you know, a, a comprehensive plan isn't only done by the planning commission and, uh, the planning and zoning department and stakeholders, right? You have public works departments, you have transportation departments, you have housing departments, you have a lot of other groups within your, uh, agencies within, within local government and even your neighboring, the state government, counties and municipalities, you're, you're joining jurisdictions. Right? I mean, a, a comprehensive plan isn't only a planning department document. It's comprehensive. Hence the name. So, right? It really touches upon a lot of different, uh, agencies, a lot of different functions in local government. So it's important to gauge them all. All right, um. So, uh, comprehensive plan work sessions are quite important. We're going to come back to them a little bit later as well. Uh, but this is where planning commissions with staff, uh, can really dig deep into a comprehensive plan. Um, and it's like, like it's called, like a work session. It's, it usually not, uh, in time for public, uh, for, right? It's not a public hearing where you're taking public testimony or public comments on it, but the public is invited, uh, to listen and, you know, commissioners will evaluate the existing conditions. Maybe staff or consultant created, uh, did an analysis of, of the existing conditions of the community and you want to discuss what that means. Um, any other information gathered, this could be through public info, input or other means. Uh, background studies, maybe you recently had a housing study done or you recently had a transportation study done. Right? It, it, that should be considered as part of an input into your comprehensive planning process or other ones done by the state. There's a lot of state plans, uh, state analyses that were done that we encourage jurisdictions and planning commissions to use as part of their plan development process. Uh, what you see here is a SWAT analysis. Many of you are probably familiar with that. It's usually often done early in a planning process. It's done outside of the world of planning as well. Uh, corporations do this, many different groups do this. What, you know, what, what is the strengths of our communities? Um, what are some weaknesses we're facing? What are some opportunities? And then what are some threats? And this is, you know, it's, it's a high level approach, uh, but it can really get people talking, interacting. And it's something, a, a good exercise for planning commissions to do. You could also do it with your community or it, with your staff. Uh, so this slide demonstrates why and how, uh, comprehensive plan impacts other planning initiatives. Uh, comprehensive plans live on, something at the Maryland Department of Planning and many other state agencies, we're always asking ourselves when we're evaluating grants, designations, other plans, uh, is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Because the way a lot of Maryland planning requirements and funding and other, uh, um, decisions are, are, uh, determined, it's, if it's consistent with a comprehensive plan, it's going to get higher, uh, higher score, higher consideration, right? Because we want to see that, uh, that, you know, the community, a jurisdiction develops its comprehensive plan. And now they're trying to, one way they're trying to implement it is through state funding or other resources. And is that this, this project that they're trying to implement, is that consistent with the comprehensive plan? Uh, so some examples are municipal growth, right? Uh, uh, municipality that wants to annex land. The area it wants to annex needs to be consistent with the municipal growth element in their comprehensive plan. So your municipal growth element should indicate in some form those areas you might annex over the life of that plant. So that could include a map, it could include a description of the properties. Uh, you know, just a, a verbal description of the properties, but that's an area of consistent. Uh, school planning for educational facility master plans, those should be consistent, uh, with a comprehensive plan. Uh, water resource planning, counties that are trying to amend, uh, uh, amend or adopt a new, uh, uh, water and sewer plan, that needs to be consistent. Does the comprehensive plan have pot, say that it wants to serve certain areas and not serve other areas by public water and sewer? You know, the, the, the MDE and the Maryland Department of Planning will look at that. Transportation planning, priority letters that go to M dot every year, uh, asking for, you know, these are our priority projects that we want state funding for. Those should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So lots, they, they live on. It's very important to have that long range view when you're developing a comprehensive plan, knowing that, okay, those future actions we take need to be consistent with that. Uh, cause we'll have better chance of, of getting the resources we need to, to make that, uh, happen. Inter-jurisdictional coordination, already, already mentioned this, uh, how important it is. It's, uh, it's, I'm happy to reiterate it again. Uh, you include neighboring jurisdictions. Uh, you know, municipality should always work with the, the county, county should work with neighboring counties. If you're really, if a municipality is really close to another municipality, definitely work with them. Um, and you know, this, this also has linkages after, during plan invitation when it comes to funding. Right? Like if we're looking at a county water and sewer plan that is proposing some amendments or, um, uh, amendments or a plan for water and sewer service within a municipality, right? We want to see some consistency and some coordination between the municipality and the county on, on that, their planning priorities for that. Uh, so that's al, also very important. And also, you know, the sixty day review that's required at the end or near the end of the process, when jurisdictions need to send draft comprehensive plans to state for review. They also need to send it to, uh, adjacent jurisdictions or joining jurisdictions. Now, that shouldn't be the first time that adjoining jurisdictions are hearing or learning about your comprehensive plan, right? You really, really should be talking to them early, early on in the process and they're, they're a key stakeholder, um, to, to engage. Okay, uh, so this is the, uh, review process. So the draft is developed by the planning commission, usually in partnership with, uh, staff, almost always in partnership with staff, uh, maybe a consultant and all those other stakeholders we mentioned. Uh, there is a sixty day public notice requirement and you send the, the planning commission, uh, will send that draft to us at least sixty days prior to the public hearing in which the planning commission would, may vote to recommend it for approval to the legislative body. The Maryland Department of Planning recommends you send it to us even more than sixty days prior, because you're going to get our comments back, you're going to get the comments back of other agencies and ideally from adjoining jurisdictions as well. And you're going to want to have some time to look at what those comments say, uh, before you go to public hearing. Because you need to make our comments part of the public record for that public hearing. They are going to be public, others are going to see it. And you want to understand what we've, what we've written, maybe there's some, but you, you, you see some need for potential changes. Um, so it's, you want to have time to digest what we send. Uh, and then you'll have the, the public hearing and then you either can recommend it for adoption to the, the, the council, or you can take some more time, um, to, to consider potential changes. And obviously what you'll hear at the public hearing, uh, is going to influence the decision as well. Then event, after that, after the planning commission, uh, sends it on to the, uh, the, the legislative body, they also have a public hearing requirement. They can modify the plan if they want to, but without sending it back to the planning commission, or they can send it back, uh, or they can deny it, uh, and ask you to start over. I hope that doesn't happen to you, um, and, but it is possible. Uh, but usually a, a lot of that drafting work happens in the planning commission. So it's a very, very vital role that, that planning commissions have responsibility for. Uh, there is an implementation report due to the Maryland Department of Planning five years after adoption. So we do have templates on our website that you, we recommend you use. You don't have to use them, but that, we think they make them easier. Uh, to do that, that implementation report. This is why that monitoring, adaptive management is very, very important. It'll make that report much easier. And it's just, it's just important for the planning. It's just best practice. And then every ten years, the, the land use article requires, uh, jurisdictions to review their comprehensive plan for any needed changes. This does not mean you must adopt or update your comprehensive plan every ten years, but you are required to review it. Some smaller municipalities that aren't growing uh, may see, they, they may, after they review it, they may say this plan we adopted ten years ago is still serving us well. This is still our vision. We're going to stick with it. You would just let the Maryland Department of Planning know. Now, there may be legislative changes in those ten years. For example, the, uh, you know, I saw the how, the housing element became a required element in twenty. For example, the uh, you know, I saw the how, the housing element became a required element in twenty twenty. So if a jurisdiction had adopted a comprehensive plan in twenty fifteen that did not have a housing element, and then they're looking at it again in twenty twenty-five. And it's still, you know, they, they're gonna have to add a housing element to their comprehensive plan. And we've seen many jurisdictions do that since twenty twenties. Uh all they've done, they've kept the majority of their plan that they had, they adopted previously, but they've added a housing element. Okay. Um, let me see, uh, so catch up on my notes here. Uh. Uh, oh. Okay, I don't have notes on this, but that's okay. Um, what I want to say here is that uh there are a lot of resources out there uh to help you. Um one on the right here is the uh housing data dashboard we developed for jurisdictions, once the housing element became a requirement in twenty twenty. Uh we have a whole other suite of resources available to help with housing planning. This is tends to be our most popular one, it breaks down data uh specific to housing. And uh the, it aligns with the requirements of the, of the land use article specific to those. We develop things like managing Maryland's growth, used to be a six-year review cycle, now it's a ten-year review cycle. We have water resources element guidance, we have transportation element guidance. Uh there's just a lot of resources out there to help with comprehensive planning. Uh and not just from the Maryland Department of Planning. Uh so we encourage you to, to contact us, Maryland Department of Planning has regional planners for every region, we're, for six regions in the state. And we can connect you with the proper resources, there's just a, a lot out there to help you. Okay. So I was one slide short of my notes, but now it looks like it's time for Q and A. Hope we got everybody back after the break.
Joe, no, no, no one's asked any questions in there right now, we've asked them to give us your uh questions. There's one in the chat.
Yeah, so when does the five years after the adoption or the year of the planned date? So it'd be the date of adoption. So yeah, I know that often happens that um it might be, you, you, your plan might be dated, yeah, twenty twenty-three, but it's not adopted till twenty twenty-four, it would be five years after adoption. And one thing else I want to say about planning, uh the sixty day review and that I, I didn't say, that our comments are designed to be helpful. Um and you know, we're not critical, we want to point out things that we think you may want to consider. Uh and you wanna I'm not sure why you can't see what's in the chat, but uh um, sorry about that. Uh they're not meant, they're meant to be helpful, we want to point out some things, hey, we think you're really missing one of the requirements, this is what the land use article says, you really want to consider this. Uh you know, we will point that out to you, but oftentimes we're, we're pointing out resources um that could be used for implementation. John can't see the chat either. I don't know how to fix that, uh can anybody else see the chat? Can somebody let us know if they can see the chat, what other people are saying? I know you can't see what's in the Q and A, you can only see, in the Q and A, you can only see the things, only see the questions that you enter.
I can see the chat, but I'm not sure.
Hmm, okay, let me look at the settings. Um, okay. I don't know why that's happening. Oh. Okay, that might, that looks like it was my fault, so she might be able to see them now. Uh had it set on attendees can chat with hosts and panelists, not everyone. And all right, yes, okay. So that is my error, it's a setting that I inadequately fixed, all right, okay. Well, uh so my enriched learning environment that I wanted to set up where we all could learn from each other, I didn't, I didn't follow through on my end, I apologize. Uh.
You, you have questions in the Q and A right now, Joe.
All right, all right, questions in the Q and A, great, um. So uh the find the template for the five-year implementation report.
I will, I, I will provide that.
All right, we'll drop that in the chat. Uh the data dashboard, uh. So the uh, you can also put that, that in the chat. So A, A, Adam was briefly talking about overlays before, overlays, I don't know what the M E B overlay is. But you know, overlay is something you put on top of a base zoning, so it could be on top of a residential district, the common overlay would be like a historic district uh overlay ordinance where, you know, the base zoning is still there, but then there are other design requirements or other historic preservation requirements on top of it.
I had to look up the M E B, that, that's a mineral extraction uh overlay. It's, it actually, the, what, it's, who is in a M, uh M and G of M D P for Cecil County. I don't know if that's the one or not, but it's dealing with extraction um conditional uses and uh keeping that in consideration is an overlay that you could put a extraction pretty much anywhere within that district.
Yeah, so that's a, yeah, an example, like that's probably a district where uh the geologic information has informed the county that there are mineral resources there. So uh to support, both support that industry, but also protect public health and safety, they would add a, a, an overlay on top of that, that has additional requirements also uh to the, whatever the base zoning requirements are to, you know, yeah, again, both support that industry, but also uh you know, uh protect, protect the community. Uh how did the bay falling under federal purview impact the planning requirements? Um, I don't know if I can speak to the federal purview of the bay, but there are you know, Maryland does have, there are a lot of requirements related to, to bay preservation. Um, you know, everything from stormwater to the critical area uh that they, you know, they should be accounted for in your comprehensive plan, particularly in the sensitive areas element. But a lot of those regulations or requirements are, you know, they, they apply and are required kind of regardless of what your comprehensive plan says. Um, and so it doesn't necessarily change, yeah, comprehensive plan requirement, but it does change the broader idea of planning, what you can and can't do, and what are the mitigation uh as uh requirements and regulations of development that may uh may impact the bay. All right, and I see, yes, mineral extraction. Okay. Thank you Chuck. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, and again, I apologize for incorrectly selecting the access um ability of everybody. I think we will have, I can send the chat out to everybody, we will have a chat transcript that I can access and you will be able to see things that were brought up earlier. Okay. We're gonna look specifically at uh planning commission roles and responsibilities. Some with comprehensive plans that we already dealt with, but bringing a venture into other areas as well. Okay, um so it's important to know that you are not alone, it might feel like that sometime. Planning commission is part of a much bigger team, including the, the administration of the jurisdiction, the local planning professionals, those that work uh for the uh, the jurisdiction that, for which you're a planning commission, but also uh any consultants uh or even state planning professionals, if, if it's a municipality working closely with the county, the county uh professionals. Uh obviously the legislators, the, in your, the legislative body in your local government and Maryland Department of Planning, state agencies, but also your Board of Appeals and as needed, the Maryland court system. Um, let's see. Going here, um planning commissions have different roles depending on whether they are established by charter or not. Um, non-charter counties and municipalities, uh planning commissions play an advisory role in zoning, hold on. Yeah, all right, no, no, that's right. Uh play an advisory role in relation to zoning ordinance changes, changes to subdivision and development regulations. Some development approvals such as large planned unit developments, capital budgeting and programming uh and other implementation growth management tools such as those uh that, that I mentioned earlier, that we've been mentioning earlier, such as land preservation, annexation, development rights and responsibilities. Okay, um, the my notes are, are, are mixed up, I apologize. Uh so the, the comprehensive plan has a role to help the community. Um, you know, achieve its potential, implement the vision, that's, it's, it developed in the plan. Uh they obviously have a role in presenting that plan to the legislative body, they are the key advisory body to the legislative uh to the legislative unit uh to help them uh make their decision on adoption. Uh they're involved with staff and others getting that public input, that could be formally through a public hearing. Uh but also through community meetings, surveys, other means of uh soliciting that input. They do coordinate the sixty day review as I described earlier, and then again, the ten-year review. Okay. So I think I read the notes earlier for this slide, um out of order, my apologies, um. So again, I'll, I'll just re- repeat, repeat it now that you see it on the screen, it'll make more sense. Uh in non-charter counties, municipalities, planning commissions play an advisory role, role into the zoning ordinance changes, Adam described that earlier. Uh and how complicated that can be and all the things you must consider. Um the changes to subdivision and development regulations, um planned unit development approvals in some cases. And capital budgeting and programming and other implementation tools. Uh there are some areas in which planning commissions have approval authority, and these will differ again by non-charter counties, municipalities and charter counties. Um, uh these include approval over the use of public land, uh this include public streets, parks, other purposes. Uh this is done through their authority to review and approve subdivisions and site plans. Uh the authority to review and approve some types of developments such as minor subdivisions can be delegated by non-charter counties and municipalities. Delegation could even go down to an administrative process, but this is where important to uh know your own rules and you're known, your own, know how things have been delegated in your own community. You know, talk to planning staff, uh talk to your attorney. Uh and so, so it's different in charter counties as, as, uh as well as we've mentioned, so in some authority for their approval of rezoning, special exceptions and variances is given to an administrative hearing officer. While other provisions such as review and recommendation, recommendation of the C I P is given to a planning advisory body, or board. Uh I know I already briefly mentioned work sessions, but I'm gonna go into a little more. Uh normally conducted when the, before I was talking about, we're just with comprehensive plans, but they can be done for lots of different things. Uh they're normally conducted when the planning commission wants to get more detail on a specific proposal or project, and then they normally get in the public hearing process. They provide time for planning staff, other professionals, could be architects, could be engineers to present information and take questions from the, the planning commission. Uh they're open to the public, normally public testimony is not taken, as I mentioned earlier. It's important that public hearings, work sessions for the planning commission be conducted in a fair and in, also very important, consistent manner. Uh it's important that your stakeholders, your, your public, uh know from meeting to meeting that there is a regular process being followed and that there's an opportunity for public input. I just last night, we had a uh M, Maryland Planning Commissions Association um works, regional workshop in Cecil County in Elkton, I know some people that were there last night said they were joining here tonight as well. Uh and we really talked about the importance of this uh consistency, understanding of the rules, because you know, some people are gonna get mad at public hearings. Uh that people aren't gonna like some of the decisions or some of the uh, the, the decisions being made or what's, some of the rules are. But uh it's very and very important, if you're consistent and you communicate those rules, you have rules and procedures. You know, you, that's the best tool you have to um prevent the, that anger, those, those situations from boiling over. Um and we, there are plenty of examples of rules and procedures from around the state, M P C A, the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association has compiled a bunch of them and can send them to you if, uh you want to look at them for adding that, creating some for your own. Uh planning commission, or you uh want to consider just, you, maybe you have rules and procedures and you just want to modify them. Uh or see examples elsewhere, how you could modify yours. Right? There we go, in reviewing the roles and responsibilities of planning commission and board of appeals, it's important to review and understand documents being presented at public hearings. Uh it is important for you to do your homework. I know that can be tough, you know, you're, you're volunteering your time, it's like, ah, I gotta show up to this meeting once or twice a month. And I also have to do homework and it, it's a lot, but it's really, really important that uh you review it, you know, seek help from staff, seek help um where you can, and uh just so you're prepared at uh, at the public hearings and work sessions. Um so you know, they can be more productive, uh they can be quicker, right? The, the, the plans themselves, the meetings themselves can go a lot quicker if you're actually prepared. Uh but this also puts some responsibility on staff and jurisdictions themselves, right? Um they should provide an overview of the type of material being presented and how to make the best use of it. They should prepare staff reports, consistent staff reports, uh site plans, plot plans and other documents, special studies, as I mentioned earlier, housing study, transportation studies, environmental and the like. Uh site plans such as the one illustrated here, it's important to understand uh how to read those. And they typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities, landscaping and buildings, as well as a tabulation of site data, which you can see down here in the bottom right. And last thing I'll talk about myself, or I'll turn it over to Chuck, are uh is the septic's law. Uh this is a very complicated law, uh adopted as part of the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of twenty twelve. And I'm not gonna go into all the detail here, I just want to point out the role of the planning commission. Uh but essentially the law uh require local jurisdictions to identify areas or tiers of where new subdivisions could be served by either onsite septic systems or public sewer system, so it's to differentiate between those, and you have four different tiers. Um the tiers one and two are either currently served by public sewer or planned to be served. Uh tier four, more like resource protection areas. Um and not to be cer- uh or not to have major subdivisions on septic, and then the, the, the big one, it would be tier three. And those are areas that could have major subdivisions on septic, they needed to be identified in the septic tier map. Uh and uh the law defined major subdivisions as five units or more, unless defined differently by uh the local septic's law and uh septic's uh map. Um, so the uh, the planning board or planning commission has a role in this, um in reviewing these major subdivisions in tier three areas. Any major subdivision in such an area uh had to be reviewed by the planning commission through a public hearing. Whether the body is currently tasked with reviewing other major subdivisions or not. Um as part of the review, the planning board or commission had to, has to consider the cost of providing local government services to the subdivision and what impacts the subdivision will have on the environment and natural resources. Uh so some of you may have experience with this, uh but it's a, you know, very specific law, they called out a very specific role for planning commissions. All right, we're gonna go through our review here. Uh again, put your answers in the chat and now other people can see other people's answers uh for the first time. So a comprehensive plan, let me get, move this out of the way, comprehensive plan is a reflection of what? A community's vision for the future, a community evolution, conditions and trends. Uh goals, objectives and policies to realize the vision, I see a long line of D's, and that's correct. It would be all of the above, and it could be more, uh this is just some of the things. The number of planning principles to be addressed in a comprehensive plan is what? All right. So it's a bit, a bit tricky, it is B, and that's brand new. Uh it's only B as of October first of this year, prior to that, how many it was before that? And you can put the number in there, there we go, it was a twelve, right, it was twelve, and it was originally seven. Uh but uh it is now eight. Comprehensive plan process should involve which of these groups? Correct, all of the above, all of these and more. Uh and the comprehensive plan is required to be reviewed every ten years, is this true or false? Yes, it is true, it's not required to be updated every ten years, but it is required to be reviewed every ten years. Most jurisdictions, I would say, update them, but it's not a requirement, and then as I mentioned, smaller uh municipalities uh that their current plan is serving them well, might not need to update them. All right, I'm happy to take any questions that may have. See, I don't see any yet. Okay, all right, well Chuck, I think they are ready for you, you asked one earlier, Tony, was it in the chat? Let me see. Scrolling up the chat. Scrolling up the chat. Lot of Bs and Eights and. Yeah, thank you Chuck for putting both of those resources in there. Can you ask your question again, Tony? I'm sorry, it's a lot of scrolling. Oh, uh, well. Um, this is the one that it's, it gets into the legal questions, and I know that that Adam and Chuck were were describing this one earlier that. Like, so I will say, I, yeah, we can't answer, the the legal question is something we can't address, but as I was talking about earlier. It's very important, uh, and it's required that the development of a municipal growth element. Uh, uh, that a, the municipality developing for its comprehensive plan coordinate with the county, right? So, you know, that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pretend that they'll always come to a perfect agreement. Uh, but it's important for a county to know what the growth, the the desires for growth are of the municipality. For the county to share what, you know, its growth plans are for the area, how they can, uh, you know, they can discuss things like greenways. Um, they can discuss uh the extension of infrastructure and services. But, yeah, I mean, I will say that, you know, a county has land use authority over. Properties in its jurisdiction and municipality has land use authority over properties within its jurisdiction. Um, we do a whole nother thing on annexations. I don't think we have time on that today.
Yeah, and 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 Joe, um. The, the, the septic law adds a complication to this issue that, um. We should just, I hate to say this talk offline, and we'll, we'll give you as much guidance as we can. We're gonna give you, we're gonna redirect you back to your. Town attorney with the, with the issue, but there are provisions in the law. That says if there is a conflict between the municipal growth tier map and the county tier map. That M D P and M D E will facilitate some degree of mediation. And and to re- to resolve those issues. Um, but unfortunately, it gets a lot more legally complicated, and so. Uh, again, we defer to your attorneys, uh, but we'll be glad to provide uh as much guidance as we can on that area.
Okay. I'm gonna stop sharing, turn it over to growth management for you.
Okay, I think I'm, I'm there, I hope.
I think you are.
Okay, hopefully everyone can see uh uh the uh slides, and I'm gonna advance them. So I'm gonna focus in uh on the growth management tools. Uh, from sub- zoning and subdivision all the way to uh A P F Os. Um, along the way, and feel free to uh enter in any questions on the side, and I will uh try to get to them. Uh, I'm not gonna oh, uh hopefully cover over too much of what uh, repeat what uh Adam has pointed or or Joe. But uh, uh, these tools that I'm gonna try to highlight on are the, the things that. Make your comprehensive plan real and and uh. Put it in action. So the comprehensive plan is your guide. It is the uh. Again, based upon Euclid, it's the, the foundation for justification of those laws that are passed by. The legislators, legislative body. Uh, the planning commission has a role in providing. Uh, uh, a recommendation with regard to zoning changes. Uh, municipalities, non-charter, uh, and some counties have uh granted. Or give the authority to approve subdivisions are at the planning commission level. So it's important for you to uh understand the relationship of your comprehensive plan. And to those tools of making the, the plan real or actionable along the way. And the, the most powerful of those is zoning. Now, um, zoning typically includes a map and text. Uh, it often deals with density, uh, how many units per acre. It deals with intensity of uses in terms of non-residential. Some ti- some jurisdictions include what are called floor ratios, the amount of um massing on a building. Deals with the, the, the setbacks and where uh. Buildings could, could occur, whether or not it's a principal building versus accessory. Usually have these pretty maps along the way, so uh you will have a uh, a map that covers all these different. Uh, districts, so one of the challenges you have is, okay, what do we put in? How many of these districts do we put together? Uh, the more you slice it, dice it, and and more you try to, you know, fit, fit that uh. Uh, thread that needle, uh, the more challenging it becomes, because uh. Once you put that map in place, you are allowing uses to occur on those particulars. And the range of uses, as I said before, you may hope it's a Trader Joe's, but it may not be a Trader Joe's. It may be. Just a uh, um, you know, a, a, a convenience store of some fashion, if you allow those. So uh, you have to look at the, the specific uses and um, you wanna make sure that it aligns with that land use pattern. That you were hoping to have in your comprehensive plan. So these are, are, this is a typical uh zoning map that shows the principal layers, and then there's overlay zones and. And a- along the way. And, and most of those times you have what are called Euclidean zoning, which is, which is a defined set of uses that are allowed. Um, one of the more uh modern uh approaches to uh ordinances is really going back to the future. Which is really going back when I, I'm from, uh, I live in Frederick and historic Frederick. Um, grew up and and developed without any zoning in place, and it's a vibrant place, and it's got a lot of mixed uses. So you got commercial on the first floor and and residential offices above it. Uh, so uh, it's really going back to the, the, the future in terms of that. Another aspect of zoning, and this is that kind of relates to those overlay zones. So an overlay zone typically is on top of a uh, the, the Euclidean or base zoning. And what it will typically do is it has a, a, a series of conditions. It may allow certain uses that aren't allowed. In the underlying area, but more often overlay zones usually establish a, a different review process. For the permitted uses that it typically is associated with. So I have a residential zone, I'm allowed to have residential housing here, and I wanna have a vacant lot, I wanna put some housing. Oh, you have an overlay zone, a historic overlay zone. Well, that doesn't mean that you're changing the, the, the density of the use per se. But you go, have to go through a different kind of review procedure. You may have to go to historic district. So the overlay zone may lay out a uh additional set of procedures. It may be an environmentally sensitive area, so you may have to have some additional studies done. Or you may have to have additional reviews done. That overlay district should spell out that level of additional requirements that you're gonna have beyond. What the principal zoning is on that property. Now, one of the more modern areas of zoning that's coming into play now is what's called form-based zoning. And what it's intended to do is to really de-emphasize the actual use of the property. And really emphasize the structure and how it relates to the public right array in the realm. And so that you can uh allow for a lot more flexibility of those uses within there. So you, you may just say it, it's all residential, or it's all non-residential. But we're co- we're gonna control based upon its form and where it is within uh the community. If it's got a main boulevard and it's real wide, you may allow for a larger massing of buildings along that that are, that are mixed use. And, and, and you may allow that mixed use on uh a, a smaller street, but it's gonna be smaller in size. So it controls that, and it also incorporates a lot of more performance standards. So you may deal with things like, uh, well, you can have uh a variety of uses. But the traffic generation from those uses can't exceed X or Y. So you use a lot of performance standards, there's often using uh noise and other means by which that you uh control the use. That you don't have to specify a specific use. It, it, it's, it tends to be more complicated. Definitely need more staff, um, a- and usually the jurisdictions that, that use it, um. They, it takes time to get it to be comfortable, and people really fa- uh feel uh that it, it works for them. So the second most powerful tool in your uh quiver of, of, of tools that you can use. Uh, at the local level is the subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations particularly are uh powerful when you are a growing community and you're subdividing property. And you're um dedicating future roads, future parks, par- school sites, et cetera, et cetera. So you're fi- filling out that community and growing. Um, subdivision also includes the consolidation of lots at times. So um, it, the definition is when you're uh uh dividing into one or more lots. So in the case of a subdivision, you can re-subdivide and consolidate lots together into one lot where it may have been. Five or six lots before, but you really couldn't fit your multifamily building on those individual parcels. And you would violate setbacks if you had all of those individual parcels. You re-subdivide and you consolidate them. As part of that process, you often look at the public rights way, and the, and, and you're, usually your comprehensive plan will lay out. Um, how wide your road should be, or what kind of roads you should be, and therefore you may have to go through the subdivision process. You may require dedication of additional right of way, or the dedication of right of way to access that property. We talked before about creating parcels of land without access, and how do you deal with that? And the subdivision process, you can control um access, and you think about that through that particular process. So subdivision process also includes a design standard, or usually it may be a compendium document. But it lays out details re- regarding, uh, regarding each of the different kinds of streets that you may wanna have in your community. You may wanna have a street that, that, that is uh narrower, it's got, you know, no parking on it or has parking on it. So you have the, you, you, you determine what the cart width is. You determine what the uh portion that is gonna be sidewalks. Or a pavement. Do you, do you wanna have bike lanes along these? So you determine your widths of your roads along the way. And you, you determine what kind of improvements are associated with it. Are you gonna have curb, gutter, sidewalk, street trees, streetlights? All of those details are, are incorporated into your subdivision regulations. So that you, when a developer comes in and wants to develop a, a, a new residential subdivision. They know what the rules of the game are, when they know what they have to uh budget for and put into the performance. Say, okay, well, I'm gonna have two miles, uh, two linear miles of street with sidewalks and a hundred trees and all of this stuff. I gotta cost it out over my hundred unit subdivision. I know how much it's gonna cost me publicly, infrastructure-wise, to be able. To afford the development, and I'm ultimately gonna sell my lots for. Um, you have to plan for your utilities along the way. Often your utilities are in the right of way somewhere. So usually wanna work with your public works department to fork out those details on where are your utilities? Now, now we have uh, you know, as a base utility, not only water, sewer. Uh, storm drains, but you also have uh telephone, cable, and internet. All of those different area, all those different infrastructures have to be laid out or planned in your design standards. So that you can, can have those uh specifications. Then, last but not least, in the subdivision process, usually this is uh first part's dealing with the preliminary subdivision. And at the end, once you've gotten everything detailed and you're ready to, to actually um convey property to sell that property. You have to record what's called a subdivision plat, and that gets recorded in the courthouse, and it specifies each of the lots, their dimensions. What's dedicated along the way, there's usually uh bonding for improvements, et cetera, and then they record those plats. And then um, you're able to write deeds that specify what the plat reference is for the conveyance of each of the lots along the way. So in addition to subdivision and site and, and zoning, uh, the, the third more powerful one is really starting to be with water and sewer plants. They really determine what the service areas of your community will be, often for municipalities, it's the entire municipality. But for counties, you know, they can only serve so much of their county with public water and sewer can convey it. So, yeah, and, and you realize that further you extend your sewer and water out, that means you're having longer maintenance responsibilities to deal with it. So you have to figure out how compact we can do it and how we can serve it, because you are constantly having to uh deal with leaks. Or maintenance issues of that facility, and you have to be able to, to treat whatever you're collecting. Or convey water to uh pub- publicly uh for uh potable water. So as part of this master plan, you look at your capacities, you look at your capital improvements, and you uh. They are required to be done every three years, and water and sewer plants are approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment. Uh, Department of Planning reviews them for consistencies with local comprehensive plans, and uh to determine whether or not. Uh, in the local plan that they, hey, they've, they've said that they're gonna serve this area. Lot of times we get these requests for uh water and sewer amendments to serve an area well outside of the area. But they're addressing a, an environmental problem with a failed septic system, or something like that, a small hamlet that, that. And those things are okay, um, and, and we certainly wanna deal with health and safety issues, but you should have that in your water and sewer plan. That you're gonna actually uh address those areas uh uh in your plan, in your conference plan. So that your water and sewer plant is consistent with that. So again, uh, the basics of a, of, of water and sewer planning is you need to factor in. What's land use approvals, you know, what's your future growth gonna be, you know, what's cost of this project? These are capital improvement types of issues that you need to think about, and service area, and then the issue often is, oh no, we're either gonna upgrade our facilities. Or expand them, enhanced uh new nutrient uh removal is uh uh the, the prototypical standard that we see in, in water and sewer plants. Then issues are focused on serving growth, consistent to comp plan. You know, again, gotta be realistic on your population. Some communities are growing. Uh, unfortunately, most instances, their sewer plants are not keeping up with their desired growth in their area. And their limiting factor is how do they uh convey uh wastewater, treated water. To uh a, 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 a uh large enough stream. Um, so that it can assimilate into the, to the water stream. Or do you have, you know, well injection programs, and there's other avenues, but uh they're all costly when you, versus just a conveyance into a stream. Um, again, factor in infill. If you want more development in your community and your comp, do you have a capacity for that? It has to be thought through that process. Related to water and sewer is adequacy of public facilities, uh A P F Os. Uh, adequate public facilities ordinances. Currently, there's thirteen municipalities, thirteen counties and twenty-three municipalities that have A P F Os. Uh, most of them have water and sewer, uh, some have, uh, sorry, most of them have roads and schools. Now, schools is the number one most common, roads is the next most common, and then water and sewer. And then sometimes emergency management, a few other types of uh facilities. Those types of things are, are certainly appropriate. Usually you need to have an A P F O, you have to have the uh, have to have a standard. So for, for roads, you usually have a standard of congestion. You've heard the, the terminology A through F. Um, so, a- and sometimes that's okay to have, quite frankly, a, 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 in a downtown situation. It's okay to have it being a slow moving, and it would probably grade out as a D or, 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 or worse. But that's an acceptable level standard in a certain area. So again, your comprehensive plan should, should talk about what kind of travel, traffic movement, what kind of safety issues. The slower the movement, the safer it is, um, a- and you plan for high speed in the appropriate areas. And low and mixed modes in other areas. So uh A P F Os should, again, have to. So APFOs should again have to tie back to your comp plan along the way. Usually there are studies that are often associated with that to ensure that you're not, you know, pulling numbers out of thin air. And then again, it's something that you want to revisit every so often. We do have a reporting requirement that requires you to submit reports on a biannual basis to us. So again, any jurisdiction can adopt APFOs. You just need to be aware that it it's not a means by which to stop growth. It is a means which to manage that growth. Reasonable times you need to accommodate. So, okay, we're going to hold it up for a few years. But we have a capital improvements program to come in place to ensure that we're not creating a takings issue, a moratorium scenario along the way that you could wind up in court if you don't have a reasonable plan to address those kinds of issues. And I moved. Sorry about that. Where's my? Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. My jumped to the end here and usually had more questions here. Okay, I don't know how. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So as I mentioned, MTP has a process of notifying you. Or we ask you to report on your APFO restrictions every every two years to us. And we submit a report to the General Assembly and and we can provide you a link to that particular report. And let's see your questions we have. Are there implications expected for APFO mitigation regulations based on recent court cases about impact fees that mentioned earlier? I don't know if Adam's going to answer, ask, able to answer much of that. I would say it's important to have backup and 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 documentation about what standards you have, why you had those standards. And then secondly, have a a plan in place to ensure that you are able to put the capital facilities in place to address any restriction or development. So that you can't, again, you can't use an APFO as a quasi moratorium along the way. It's got it's got to be a reasonable plan strategy for that. Go see if there's anything else I see here. Don't see any more questions, so I'm going to keep on moving. I'm going to keep on moving here. So next set of tools in your toolbox for this capital improvements program. As Joe mentioned earlier, local planning commissions, particularly non-charter and municipalities, are supposed to review on an annual basis the the capital improvements program to ensure that it is consistent with the local comprehensive plan. That doesn't always get done in some jurisdictions. But it is in the land use article that they're supposed to actually have it presented to them. And then you should give an an opinion back to the legislative body on the consistency of that plan to our capital improvements program. So capital improvements program, it again, it's it's the implementation from the capital investment side of the community. It includes the budget and the program. So it's typically a six-year plan, five years of the of the of the program and one year of the budget. These are some sources of funding that you have with general funds obligation, general obligation bonds. If your community is a larger community, there's a CDBG program. If you're in non, if you're a smaller jurisdiction, you may be able to get state funding through DHCD for block grants. But again, that that needs to be needs to be programmed well in advance. POS funding from the state that usually goes to the counties and then it gets passed through to municipalities. There are other funding sources, water, sewer, water and sewer sources from MBE. And then there's obviously the developer contributions such as impact fees that you may use as part of your sourcing for capital improvements. Capital improvements process is just a lot like the comp planning process. You inventory existing situation, you know, you evaluate it, you study it, you determine where your 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 needs are. You you get input from other folks along the way. You prioritize things and then you develop that capital improvements program. And then you put it in your budget along the way. For municipalities, return to municipalities right now. So for municipalities, and I think Joe mentioned this before, the provisions for annexations is in the the local government article. And anytime that a municipality is anticipating to annex a piece of property, bring it in. This is one of the few times, and I remind local governments, you do not have municipalities, you do not have to annex. So this is the few times you actually are in the driver's seat. Usually you're always having to react to things such as, you know, once they're in the community, they 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 want to do a development here and you have to react to it. Well, in the case of an annexation, again, you could you as a municipality, you could deny it. You could say not interested. So therefore, you can actually, there are ways to actually put restrictions on certain you pieces of property coming in if you actually want to do it. It's essentially a deed restriction on the property. And and there's ways to exact certain type of negotiations with them. It's an annexation plan. So there's means by which you can ensure that the annexation is a complement to your community and not a hindrance. So what are the things you have to think about in an annexation? Here are the the state requirements. It's got to be contiguous to the community. You can't completely incorporate, you know, go go around and create an enclave. And you obviously can't annex an area. Well, that's not so obvious because we actually had someone try to do this. They wanted to incorporate an area that was already incorporated in another municipality. So you can't incorporate something or try to annex something that's already another one. So then there's some notification requirements. We're happy to assist you. We'll point you to the statutes. And and there is a requirement now that once you have completed the annexation process. First of all, during that process, you're supposed to notify us 30 days prior to the actual annexation going to public hearing so that we can review it and get you some input back into that. We we usually look at it from a PFA perspective, but we also want to make sure that you're consistent with these procedures procedures. Then we ask that you, once you've annexed it, got your ordinance done, you're supposed to send a copy to departmental legislative services, but you're also supposed to send us one because what we do is we update our maps. MDP is responsible for maintaining the municipal boundaries for all municipalities on interactive maps throughout the state map. So it's important for you to to be aware of that. So some of the rules for the development newly annexed. You can actually, like I said, you can limit densities, you could prevent, permit, prohibit certain developments. This is isn't contract zoning, but again, it's in the public realm. And you have you have one of the few times you have a stay assay in actually controlling what's going to happen in your community through this new development. Adam talked about this before. There's a provision in the land use article for a jurisdiction to negotiate an agreement for a developer to do certain things. It's it's an agreement between the government and the developer that conditions development on on them doing it for a certain period of time. And it's intended to deal with some of the vesting issues. It 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 freezes, it's intended to freeze the development regulations as specified in the agreement for a year, for a year. It could be as valid as five years, and we've seen them go up to as many as 20 years. And I caution you, 20 years is a long time and you may or may not want that. But theoretically, it could be done up to a a a specified period of time. So there there is some value in doing this that you can ensure some predictability. You may want to get some public improvements then done. And the improvements for that are part of the agreement for the the developer to say, okay, I'm going to do this. And for this, I'm going to get my my units in that I was going to that that really depending upon to pay off what I'm putting in the public improvements. So that is that. And as Joe mentioned before, we got lots of other resources. MML and Mako have a lot of great resources that you may want to consider. There's other sources out there. Please touch base with your regional planner along the way. If you have a question, we're there. And I'm now into the question, but before we go to the questions, is there something that governs how big a municipality could be? No, short answer. It's only, I guess, governed by your ability to 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 serve your 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 constituents. So no, I mean, theoretically, you know, Baltimore City was what? Close to a million people at one time? So no, there there's no restriction on how big it could be. That being said, one of the things you have to realize is that Maryland has is a strong county form of government. And so counties have a significant influence on things. So water and sewer plants have to go through the county. It's municipal plans, you can't submit your plan for water and sewer straight to MDE. It has to go through the county. POS funding goes through the counties. So there are things that are factors in that relationship between municipality and a county along the way. Municipality, excuse me, counties can serve urban, provide urban services. So they can and do at times compete with municipalities. And given the fact that a municipality is essentially double taxed with they pay the county tax and the municipal tax. And there's some legislation, but not a lot on how to deal with that equity issue between a municipality paying county taxes. Municipalities are a disadvantage in the development scenario. That's just a fact that you have to deal with. So you have to be creative and attractive for a municipality. So real quick.
We have, there's one question in the chat and there's one guest who's had their hand raised for a long time. So I might, they've been patient, so I might unmute them. Let's start with the one in the chat and then I'll unmute the guest. On an already annexed piece of land that's only contiguous by a fictitious roadway corridor, can it be unannexed if it's a burden and not really part of the town?
So the answer is you you can unannex or deannex, I think is the terminology we have. But it you have to follow the same process as annexation. Adam has given us guidance on that. And so I would encourage the person that's asking about potentially deannexing a piece of property to reach out to the regional planner. We can take a look at it, give you some guidance on the contiguous nature. Again, you don't want to deannex something and create if you have a piece of property here that's in the town and a piece of property here and it's connected by an umbilical cord, you really can't deannex that umbilical cord unless you decide to deannex the entire piece of property that you covet or want. So you you have to look at it in totality, but the unannexing, deannexations go through essentially the same process as an annexation, but in reverse. You have to have the hearings, you have to go through that process and then you have to adopt. There's an ordinance that actually have, and we'll are, we can provide guidance on that.
So I'm going to unmute William Heiner. To verbalize your question, William? You have to unmute William. William, he might have accidentally raised his hand. So. All right. Well, let's go to the review. William, if you have a question, go ahead and type it in the chat or the Q and A, sorry.
Okay. So you can put in the chat, zoning in Maryland can change through. So we didn't talk about this one. The answer is A, a comprehensive process. And and that 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 is ideally the way it should happen. Subdivision should show the proposed location of streets, utilities, landscaping, all the above. Yep. Well, I see I see lots of Ds. According to state law, the county water and sewer plants should be kept current. A, B, C, or D? Answer is B, every three years. Water and sewer plants get updated every three years. Your comprehensive plan is 10 years, but your water and sewer plan is every three years. Funding for capital permits can include which of the following? General fund, general obligation, block grants? Or D, all the above? Yep. D, all the above. Unless amended or extended by local improvement body, how long the development of rights and responsibility agreement lasts? A, only last two years? B, five years? C, 10 or 20 years? D, forever? The answer is B, only five years unless you work out some longer term agreement with them at the front end. So the law says five years or less otherwise agreed. Okay. Which of the following is true about newly annexed land? Must be contiguous to an existing municipal boundary? Can't be within another incorporated municipality? Can't create an unencorporated enclave? Or D, all the above? Yep, got it, D. And that is the completion of those questions are the closing here. Are there any last minute questions that are in the audience that you wanted to ask, but you're afraid to ask? As I mentioned earlier, feel free to to put them in here and we'll give you a few seconds to to do that. We will send out a certificate to you. It will be electronically so that you could print it out on your your color printer. And we will also provide you a link to the PowerPoint presentation so that you can download that PowerPoint presentation. We are looking to see if we can, we have recorded this session, but we're also seeing if we can post the recording along the way. So those things we are, as Joe mentioned before, we have regional planners throughout Maryland that are your resource and they can facilitate conversations within MDP or get with other state agencies along the way. Should you wish to talk about conference planning, implementation of plan, what have you? We are your your gateway to state agencies along the way. We'll be happy to to provide that service and support. Any final questions? Enclave doesn't get, so yes. Gaithersburg, I've looked at this a little bit. Gaithersburg is an anomaly. It has a donut. I don't know how it was created. I don't I don't know if it was created, quite frankly, before the it may be the reason why the provisions were put in place that you can't create enclaves. This is not unusual that once something happens, there's a, as Adam pointed out with Terrapin Run, there there is a legislative reaction to it. Adam pointed out with Terrapin Run, there, there is a legislative reaction to it. So uh, but, so Gaithersburg is, is one of the only jurisdictions I know that has a unique situation uh that, and you could annex uh federal land. Uh, city of Frederick is annexed for Dietrich. Uh, and so it's not that it's uh, because quite frankly, federal government doesn't really care what municipalities is then get taxed. Um, and it's often has its own services. So uh uh, that's why right of ways, the, the state, uh, you oft, they often use rights ways to connect things. Uh, the state typically does not put a, put a position in on using its right of way for connection of things along the way. We've act, we raised a question about when you do annex right of way, who's going to go to an accident at that location? So you should think through an annexation to figure out when the police come, do they go in all four corners? Or do they have to feel like, uh-oh, that, well, that, to those legs of that intersection are in the county? So that, uh, we can't deal with that juris, that from a jurisdictional, they do. But a- again, it, it starts to get messy when you start dealing with things like, uh, we're on a right of way. So you have to think through those types of things. But uh, again, uh, it's an interesting situation with uh, uh, with Gaithersburg. Any final questions? I think none. And we are, uh, we may get you out early.
Uh, somebody made a comment that we need to update the date on the certificate and of course. We'll, we'll make sure that it has the today's date uh on, on the certificate. That was just an image of a representative certificate, but good point. Um, yeah. Thank you all uh for joining us and uh thank you, Adam and Chuck uh for a great class. And don't forget about MDP if you have other questions. We're here.
Thank you again. Have a great evening. Bye now.